All right, good evening. Welcome to the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting on Thursday, November 16th. We have the first item on the agenda is AB 7495, franchise agreement with Seattle Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. And Sheldon, you have a presentation for us?
Actually, I don't have a formal presentation but to bring forward and just briefly talk about the Agenda Bill and the purpose of it and very little, I shouldn't say very little, but a little bit about the franchise and then we can open it for questions. And I have with me tonight Alana Zanna from Agda Murphy Wallace, who can answer any specific questions about the franchise, as she helped me negotiate the franchise with the folks with Verizon Wireless. So what this Agenda Bill does is it presents a franchise agreement for wireless facilities within the city right-of-way, specifically known as small cell facilities. It's a relatively new technology that's out there intended to meet the needs of the wireless carriers for filling gaps in service and to address hotspots where they need to increase the service in the different areas. What the franchise does, the draft franchise that's been presented to council is it provides for a five-year franchise, renewable in accordance with IMC 12.60. And then also what it does is it allows Verizon to attach these wireless facilities to non-city-owned poles in the right-of-way. Poles that are owned by the city, it's acknowledged that they cannot attach to our owned facilities unless another agreement is arranged between the city and the carrier. And so the facilities would still have to go through a land use permitting process through the Department of Development Services. And so this is really just the permissions to allow them to come into the right-of-way. And that's the real basic tenants of the franchise, very similar to other franchises except this one's for wireless small cell instead of a wire line facility. So with that, I'm going to open it for questions and we can respond as the council may have questions.
Okay. So Sheldon, in the packet, we didn't have an example of what the installation looks like, which I think would be helpful when this comes to council. So can you describe a little bit about what exactly, if it's a non-city-owned pole, what is it? Is it a 10-foot pole that they put in? What does it look like?
Thank you for asking that. No, they are also under the franchise, they are not allowed to add any poles in the right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
They are only allowed to install on existing poles. It doesn't mean that they aren't allowed to replace existing poles with another pole that would meet their need as well as the owner's need of that pole that they're going to attach to. The facilities themselves are relatively linear in nature, but they can go up to, is it 17 cubic feet?
Yeah, the equipment associated with the facilities can, the primary equipment enclosure can be 17 cubic feet, the antennas can be three cubic feet each, so there can be multiple antennas. Typically, you see between one and four.
And other cities are, what other cities have already entered into a franchise agreement?
Other cities that have entered into similar agreements, Bellevue and Burien. I believe Tacoma recently entered into one. Seattle is permitting it on Seattle City light poles right now, so they don't have a franchise agreement, but we're starting to see small cells deployed there. I think the city of Everett entered into one, I believe either Spokane did or is about to, it's probably about the same part in the council process. And there are several other cities that are working on a franchise with regard to small cell.
Okay. In those jurisdictions, do their franchise agreements address aesthetics in any way, different than how we have?
Burien, not different than how, Burien and, Burien does not talk about it different than what you have. I will say that yours is actually more restrictive than the Burien one. Bellevue, it was a different type of agreement. This is a citywide agreement. In Bellevue, they specifically attached the designs and only allowed the construction of small cell facilities in three distinct areas. That's because it was passed about a year ago and small cell was even at that time more new. I mean, the city council of Bellevue and the staff there were not as familiar as I would say we are now, the staff here is now, and so it was very limited to the specific deployment. I can't speak to Spokane and Sea-Tac. I believe Tacoma is a citywide franchise and I don't believe they have the aesthetic standards in their franchise.
Okay. Is this the one that the cities were lobbying at the state level to have retained control?
This is exactly the topic.
Okay.
And we're not relinquishing control in this franchise agreement.
Great. Thanks.
So this is Verizon and is, are we creating, is there any barrier for other service providers in the city? Are we creating any type of barriers or un, or advantage that wouldn't be available to other service providers?
We're not creating any barriers or advantages with this to any service provider. As a matter of fact, there's been two other providers that have now approached the city to put an application in for a small cell franchise, which we will begin negotiating with them once their applications are completed.
So this is about improving their quality of service?
Yeah, it's about improving the quality of service that the wireless providers are providing today.
Okay, so and, and what's the, what's the real, what's the public benefit beyond, beyond to their customers, just the general public benefit? And this is probably more general. I know for franchise agreements, we don't really ask for a lot from those that are requesting it. So what is, how would you characterize the public benefit?
Well, it improves communications between all of-
Well, there's for their customers, that's for their customers.
Well, I'll let Alana answer that.
And I'll answer a little bit, and if you want more of an answer, Verizon is sitting in the audience right now.
Okay.
So with your permission, we could ask them to address it more. What they claim as a public benefit beyond to its own customers is a 911 capabilities. So I believe the statistic they throw out is about 70% or more 911 calls are through cell phones. So that increased ability for, in an emergency, locating individuals because of the GPS and the increased cell, the increased number of cell points that they can, I don't know if the word is triangulate, but locate an individual. They believe eventually that when self-driving cars exist, that they will augment the ability for self-driving cars. And then this is for their own customers on this point, but the idea of the Internet of Things. So the idea that if you're going to be controlling your alarm from your phone, your lights from your phone, your heat and your air conditioning from your phone, this will enable you to do so at a faster speed and, and when there are so many more devices using their infrastructure that they'll be able to do so without having buffering or slowness. And again, if you want, we can ask Verizon to answer more about it.
Well, that would be interesting to hear what they have to say, but I'm just, we don't really seem to approach these franchise agreements from really, really defining clearly what the general public benefit is. I mean, it's, we got some great territory, it's great space, and to make, you know, it available for a franchise like that is a tremendous benefit and all of our carriers for all the different franchise agreements that we have. And I'm just trying to, we've never had a lot of conversation, I don't remember having any conversation about really what is the benefit to the public for these. I do know that in some circles, you know, there's, they're asking for a little bit more, such as providing, you know, high-speed Internet access to more people within the community as a benefit of getting a franchise agreement, you know, along those lines. You know, better 911 services is almost accidental as opposed to a direct benefit to the public.
So if I may answer.
Sure.
So in the communities in Washington that I'm aware of, and I represent about 30 cities and am in touch with others, they don't ask for additional pieces like high-speed Internet, et cetera, because under the state statute, we can't charge what's called a franchise fee, whereas we do ask for things like that out of Comcast or WAVE, in which we can charge franchise fees and we have some more abilities to ask for additional items. And so you don't see those monetary consideration, including in-kind, in most Washington franchises outside of the cable franchises.
And that's controlled by the state statute?
That's controlled by state statute. In addition, both state and federal law require that cities do not effectively prohibit wireless and wireline carriers within their rights-of-way. So one of the problems we deal with, with a franchise is if it is, if we were to grant one, is to say, well, we're not going to grant it, we're going to deny it and, because we don't want small cells in the city of Issaquah at all. So then that type of statement would be effectively prohibiting Verizon Wireless from using the rights-of-way for small cell facilities. There's some nuance there, but the idea is, is that if, you can't effectively prohibit the usage of the right-of-way by telecommunications industry.
Okay, all right. Okay, so it sounds like, so this is new to me, state statute not allowing really there be any kind of, whether it be monetary or in-kind, public benefit. That's interesting. And, and also, we're not really creating any type of business advantage, this opportunity exists with others within that marketplace. And how many do we have, have they said how many they think they'll be installing and when?
Apparently, they only have one area of town that they want to install in, and that's up off the Issaquah Falls City Road and Pine Lake Road, Issaquah-Pine Lake Road. That's their initial application where they're going to want to install on PSC poles. They haven't come to us or indicated how many and where the other ones may be. It's a function of where their needs are.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to kind of summarize in simple language and tell me if my statements are right or wrong. So this being the first agreement prohibits no other carrier from coming in and getting other agreements.
Correct.
All right. And so I imagine anybody else could get a similar thing to this, since we've put all the work into this one. But it also gives them no real rights because when they want to do something, they have to come to either the city or whosoever facility they want to use and basically work through a standard permitting process for every specific thing they want to do.
Correct, though, I would see it as they have a right to use your right-of-way. This franchise grants them the right to use your right-of-way.
But they can't put anything in it.
They cannot attach directly to the right-of-way, they have to, under this franchise agreement, attach to an existing pole or structure.
Right, and they have to get permission from that owner to attach to that structure.
And not only that, they have to get permits from the city to attach their small cells to a pole. So PSC has to grant permission and then the city also has to grant permission.
For PSC poles or for just a city pole, just be us, right?
Correct.
All right, so it really gives them the right to ask for something is what it gives them basically.
Yes, but I don't like to tell them that.
All right. Comment, Paul?
No.
No? All right, and it doesn't hit anybody else, and so we would look at everything else on a case-by-case basis. Basically, it's a start of a process and assuming we will have others coming in, because it's, we don't have one cell company that's running the world yet, so.
You're on the shortlist for all of the carriers.
Right, with a couple more coming. Okay, and basically it'd be the same and they would do the same thing. And, all right, so that's all that's given. And if I remember, there's a $2,500 was just a fee and the cost of doing that or something around that? So they're paying the cost of-
Right.
-our cost and a fee.
That's correct. There's a $2,500 application fee and then they've, they're paying for all of Agda Murphy's time in negotiating this.
And all the costs.
So the $2,500 was the application fee and a deposit, so they deposited, I thought it was another $2,500, and then if we exceed it, then they have to pay those costs too.
Right, so they're paying all the direct costs plus the $2,500 application fee.
Correct.
All right, so I think I summed everything up there.
I have a couple questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So do they pay Puget Sound Energy or whoever owns the poles?
Yes, so if they attach to Puget Sound Energy pole, they pay them, and if the city were to allow them to attach to a city-owned pole, they would pay the city.
And if they were to locate outside of the right-of-way on private property, they would pay a private property owner?
Yes, and they currently do.
Okay. Can you have them come up if, and show us any pictures of what we might be looking at?
Did you bring any pictures? I, I have a few.
Okay.
But what I don't have is something to put up there. I can pass around the initial designs.
Sure.
While you're looking at that, any other questions, Paul? You good?
No. Lots of installations.
Well, there are approximately about 20, I think this is a 17 installation, but I could be wrong off the top of my head, approximately about 20 installations in the initial deployment.
About 20 in six blocks.
And I would expect future deployments.
All right. One last question, if you're looking at that. Would PSC have to do something or they're not forced into it? They want to use one of their poles, they don't have to agree to it? Or is there pressure to do, for them to do so?
Both. There are some federal regulations relate, and state regulations related to the usage of their utility poles, so requiring them in some situations to allow attachments to their poles. PSC is working in a friendly manner with the carriers.
And say, for example, they came up with a place that doesn't have existing facilities, they could apply for that also under this agreement to put in the structure itself or that is absolutely not allowed?
That currently in this agreement's not allowed. It was a big negotiation point and it was basically a point that we didn't feel the city was ready to make a decision on. And so if they wanted to cite small cell facilities in the city of Issaquah at this moment in time, it was something that it should go on existing infrastructure and then once planning, public works, and other administration and the council decide otherwise, they could move forward with possibly an amendment.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
More questions?
Okay.
So we have, Sheldon, in some parts of town, our plant, our codes say that we are undergrounding power and eliminating power. So how does that, how does, how do these two pieces go together? If we underground power, does it mean we lose an opportunity to have these new topics?
That was the big question mark and why we hadn't been able to come to a decision on new structures in the right-of-way without a code revision to determine how that would look. And so in places that are underground electrical facilities, there are essentially two options. One is attached to a city-owned pole, if the city were to grant that permission. The problem even with attaching to a city-owned pole in the city of Issaquah is that the poles in many of your underground neighborhoods are about 15 feet high and these facilities need infrastructure that's about 25 to 30 feet high. So it's not, not necessarily workable to attach to a city-owned pole. And so then the conversations are, what are some creative design standards that we can come up with to remedy this problem? And at this point, neither the industry nor the city of Issaquah nor frankly, any other city have really come up with a great design standard. I'd say any other city. Denver has one. I don't know if it's something that the city of Issaquah would want or not, but there's very few cities that have figured out that problem.
And to follow up on your question, so say they do mount on a pole somewhere and then that's an area we want to underground things, how would we deal with that?
There is strict provisions in here in this franchise that requires relocation. So just like your electrical facilities or Comcast, just like any other facility attached to that pole, they would have to relocate unless the city for some reason decided to say otherwise.
So the other utilities, though, underground?
The other utilities underground, although most franchises say that they can relocate first, typically they underground because they can't really relocate in order to get the service where they want.
So these, many, whatever they're called, they could not go underground, so they could actually tie our hands in terms of-
No, they're required to relocate. So if the pole goes away, they have to figure out where they're going to relocate.
So the service level would go down or they'd have to find a private place to do it?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like we pretty much have control of things at this point.
I like to think so.
Okay, all right. So with that-
Hold on, question?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
Just quickly looking through these drawings, are these drawings of all like the existing PSC poles?
I believe those are existing PSC poles.
So they're not, I'm not familiar with the power lines along those corridors, but these are not necessarily look like the poles that are serving the power to residential units, it's more of a transmission line?
Those are transmission lines, they're the high-voltage lines that go along that corridor. Those poles, the wires are the carrying voltages that you probably would not be able to underground.
Right, that's, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, so, okay, all right. That's what all of these are? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the recommendation is to send this back to the full council on next meeting, December 4th?
Public. Thanks.
So before we do that, any public comments?
Can we discuss a little bit before we talk about sending it on, because I have some concerns?
Sure, that's what I was asking for.
Okay, so there's a couple of things. One is it's a new use of the right-of-way and I get the sense in listening that we don't actually know what we're agreeing to yet because it's a brand-new use. I liked Paul's question about what's the community benefit to this. Well, it sounds like if we have a neighborhood with underground, we're not going to see these there. So there isn't, there are certain areas in the city with underground power where this is not likely to happen. So to me, I'd actually, there's a couple of things I'd like to see. I'd like to see more information on the aesthetics to understand what they're going to look like. I'd like to know why Bellevue did location-specific, because if they had rationale for saying it can be here but not here, I want to understand what that is. And I also think that from a city point of view, we know where we have the power above and below ground, show me where these could show up. Because if there's a big swath of our city where we're never going to get advantage of this and a small trunk lying out in an edge, I don't know, I think we should think about it more. So I, I don't think I have enough information yet. I think it's a big deal to load something new into your right-of-way. I think you ought to understand what it is, we ought to understand what it is. I don't have a good understanding of it. I'd like, those are the additional pieces of information I'd like to see. And I think aesthetics needs to be included in the Agenda Bill. That's where my head is.
Okay. Any more, Paul?
I don't have anything to add, but I'll agree with Mary Lou in that let's, I think this is something new, so let's get a little bit, let's get this additional information. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so if you want to do that, that would roll it into next month's Infrastructure Committee meeting and timing and then do that. So you have a concern over there, it looks like.
With the permission of the council here, I can answer some of those questions, if you want.
Which neighborhoods may not be served by this in town?
Well, so I took notes on your questions and I'd probably answer all three of them if, or at least attempt to answer them, and then you just decide from there if that's allowed?
Okay.
Okay, so let's start with Bellevue for a second, because I was involved with the Bellevue project. The reason why they chose three specific locations is because Verizon identified three specific locations. It wasn't that Bellevue chose these areas, Verizon approached the city of Bellevue and said, here are three areas that we would like to build out as our initial deployment. And Bellevue said okay to that. So it wasn't that Bellevue, that Verizon's saying these are the only areas that we're going to serve, or that Bellevue said these are the only areas you're going to serve, it was just, this is our first initial deployment and we want to get something out there and get built out there. And in two of the three areas, it was PSC-owned facilities. The third area is the downtown area, I don't, I know that that has not finished, well, they haven't even finished the lease on those city-owned poles yet, so it could be a while before those are built out. So that's, there's not some great rationale in Bellevue, unfortunately, it was just-
It's okay to ask questions.
Yeah, please.
So why wouldn't we just allow them to use the locations they've asked for now, so that we just limit it to what they've asked for instead of giving them access to the whole city in the first shot?
The city's standard franchise agreement does a citywide franchise for wireline wireless and then the idea is, is that it kicks over to staff with either the Public Works Department or the Planning Department to then help with the aesthetics and figuring out the sighting and figuring out what works. Part of the benefit of that is that your staff understands which poles will, can hold these facilities, which poles are going away, for example. And we've had a meeting once where AT&amp;T said, well, we're interested in these poles and the staff understood that there's going to be redevelopment in that area. So there's, there's the benefit of trusting that the staff members can help identify what the best routes are. And a problem with doing only an area of the city is then they have to come back to council again and ask for an amendment and ask for the specific deployment. That typically takes at least 120 days. So that's, causes a barrier to entry essentially in a very long amount of time before they can cite another facility in another location. So that's kind of the reason for the citywide.
And to add to that, you made a comment earlier about, you know, what neighborhoods would not receive. By providing a citywide, we're providing opportunity for them to look citywide in as much area as they possibly can where they have gaps of service and things like that, so we're not having to come back to council every time and amend the franchise agreement. So we're trying to provide that opportunity, but yet in a very restrictive way of where they can place them, you know, on what poles and things like that. And it just made it more administratively efficient and service provision efficient is why we chose citywide as well as what Alana was talking about.
And then to answer your questions about the underground areas, I don't think they're going to see small cells today or in 60 days from now, but I do think eventually the city and the carriers will figure out a plan to make sure that those areas get the service that they need. And you're right, it, we don't have that right now. One of the issues will be is if you keep waiting till you figure out those plans, you're going to bump up against at least another year. I mean, when you think about all of the different neighborhoods and all the different design standards within those neighborhoods within the city of Issaquah. So to make sure that you cover the entire area of Issaquah and meet the unique needs of all of those neighborhoods would be fairly difficult and time-consuming of both council and staff. And so I think that the city will figure that out, the city staff and the council, but I do believe that eventually you will see service there in one, in some form or another. May not be small cell, it may be some other type of technology.
Thanks, actually, that's helpful a little bit. It still feels to me like we don't know what this is, we don't know what it looks like. It's not going underground, it's going to be visible. I think I want to know what it looks like. That was a pretty small area for 20 installations. You know, I think I am not ready to say it's okay to go citywide with something we don't know just because it's administratively easier or there's 120-day delay. Right now, they're not allowed in at all. This would allow their project to go forward. I don't know, just not comfortable saying, go ahead, you get our whole city so that you can pick and choose where to put it, even though we don't have any skin in the game to say this is an underserved area. Yeah, but that's an underground power and it's not coming. So I don't actually feel like we have much control at all over improved service. We'll get improved service where they want to provide improved service and that's where there's poles. So I'm actually, still want to see some more information on aesthetics. Like to understand if there are jurisdictions that handle this differently, which you explained Bellevue did. I actually like the idea of one project and not a citywide agreement right out of the gate.
You in the same place, Paul?
Did provoke another question. I'm just doing a little quick research online and I see, and this is just from Wikipedia, so it's, consider the source. And that they are, they have a range of 10 meters to a few kilometers. And I look at that design and it's just along a couple corridors, so I'm assuming it's just really servicing vehicles along those, that, those two roadways.
So I think Verizon says their range is about 300 to 500 feet.
500.
Excuse me, 500 to 1,000.
Okay.
Feet. So one of the fundamental differences between small cell and macro facilities is the macro facility is designed to provide coverage. So if you- So if you have the macro facility, your phone works. What the small cell does is it augments that coverage, but specifically it augments the capacity. It means, not that your telephone, as you dial a number, works, means that you can download Netflix faster and stream video or run your self-driving car or Facebook or those pieces. It's the idea that the capacity of the number of phones that are connected in the system in that area can just get faster service. So it's not that those phones don't have service today or an area doesn't have service, it's that this is going to augment that service.
And if, by them, if they put these small cells on any given tower, does that preclude any other wireless infrastructure company to use the same tower?
So that, there's a technological question to that and a city decision question to answer to that. Technologically, sometimes the answer is no, that they cannot co-locate, that it, that may or may not change or vary depending on the deployment or the carrier. Many city councils do not want more than one small cell facility per pole. And so when they come to doing code revisions, they actually restrict what's called a co-location.
Why?
Aesthetics. So if you co-locate, imagine if you've got two antennas from Verizon and now another two or three antennas from AT&amp;T, that aesthetically may seem unbalanced or seem ugly on a pole, plus the equipment shelter on the pole.
Yeah, so it's interesting, so the amount, it does, there is an aesthetic question at a certain level. And, you know, so actually, my greatest, and it's my greatest, it's not great, but it's my greatest concern, it's just, I'm not sure yet that we wouldn't be creating by an unfair market advantage to just one provider. I'm not sure that that, because I just looked at that design there and I don't know how many poles that is out of the ones that are there and you're saying basically nobody else could ever compete in that space with that level of capacity? That's, is that, that seems possible to me based upon what you just said.
At some point, there may be all the poles are used. I don't have an idea of how many poles you have there, but these are the providers that have been competing with each other for decades now and they understand this issue. And so Verizon may be first, first one in the gate here in Issaquah and AT&amp;T might be the first one in Renton. And so they understand how that all works and they're, they're driven by their own business needs as to when they're going to apply.
Yeah, and let me say it a different way, I understand what you're saying, it's just that with this agreement, would we be potentially kind of creating almost like a pseudo-single provider market space in certain areas? Nobody else could ever can come in and compete?
I don't.
In certain geographic areas?
I don't believe so, again, I don't know your specific poles, but the answer to that would be, "Well, okay, there's no more poles here, so what other infrastructure can you attach to? Are there low-grade buildings that you can attach to?" And those typically allow co-location. Are there city lights that you can attach to? Could you build a macro facility to serve the same purpose? So I think that if and when you get there, there are other potential opportunities that you would look at and then apparently, you know, at some point, maybe, well, maybe we need a new light pole in a certain area or a new utility pole, maybe can they cite a new pole to get there? I think it would take a while before you tapped out all of your infrastructure. You don't look convinced.
No, I'm just thinking, just because, you know, if you say additional power infrastructure is required, then it's more like, yeah, and then there's this growing forest of towers.
So, yeah, let me throw in, just because as I didn't get a chance to really look at the plans there, so I think for me, we're definitely missing what this thing really looks like. I mean, I was there and haven't seen a picture of anything yet at all and that, that's a big missing feature. And when you add the fact that they may be like 500 feet apart, that brings a whole nother level of a whole lot of, lot very close together, like, and I didn't, again, I didn't get a chance to look at it because it was on the spot here, but 20 poles in one, there were 20 spots in very one, a little short place. So I think that brings in another piece of that as well for me. Go ahead, Mary Lou.
So just listening to Bill and Paul talk, what strikes me that we're missing here, and this is what I hear in the questions, is that the agenda bill itself just says, "Here's an agreement." What is not apparent at all is what the policy choices are in that agreement and what I would like to see come back is a memo that talks what they are. In terms of aesthetics, we are not looking at aesthetics at all. I'd like to know what other cities do and I still may choose not to go with any sort of aesthetic criteria. They're not recreating a monopoly. What have other jurisdictions done about that? And even just letting us know that we're creating that, that what this says is we'll probably just have one vendor on most of our poles. Does it say, where does it, as a city, are we saying they can have multiple people on, multiple suppliers on poles or what is this agreement that we're signing telling us?
We're not precluding multiple providers on the pole. That becomes a technical issue with the providers, the wireless providers, and as more applications come in for franchises and you grant franchises there, that provides the next wireless provider the right to be in the right of way as well. We're not precluding co-location. That becomes a technical issue between the carriers and the pole owners. That's not, you know.
So whatever, yeah, I guess what I want Sheldon is, I'd like to see that in writing. I'd like to see you guys tell us what we're approving. I'm still in favor of looking at why we wouldn't go with one application first. Also, just to clarify, this is for mobile users, not residential or business users? The reach of this network is really for those who are in the corridor?
It's for cellphone usage.
Right, so you have to live within 500 feet or 1,000 feet to benefit from it or be driving down the road?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, Gregor?
You're welcome to come up. That's what you're here for? Yes. Yeah, or you can just sit there, share a mic, whatever you want to do.
I need my address and everything.
No, okay. State your name, please.
Okay, Gregor Gadbaugh with Verizon.
Thank you.
All right, so, sorry, I was, a lot of questions that were being asked, I wanted to answer. So as far as our deployment is concerned, where we need cells doesn't necessarily mean that's where our competition needs cells. It all depends on variables as far as RF engineers determining, you know, if we have capacity constraint in a certain area and that could be completely different than, say, AT&amp;T Mobile. As far as co-location, PSC does not allow us to co-locate, so on any PSC pole, you will only have one carrier. And right now, that's what we're looking at is PSC poles. As far as the distance that they get deployed, it depends on the size of the radio. We have, you know, as small as a 5-watt radio and up to a 20-watt radio. The higher the watt radio, the further it can cover, the lower, the less, the less distance it covers. So one of the puts and takes as far as deploying is, we can go with smaller radios, which look better, but then you may need more because they don't cover as far. And we don't necessarily need to have one on every street corner, it ultimately just depends on where we need to put them. And the biggest piece as far as small cells is to deal with, it does help in coverage, absolutely, but it's capacity because usage, data usage, phones, tablets, it's going up exponentially, it's going to continue to go up and that's what we're trying to do is augment that usage. One thing to be aware of is, again, we have our macros, they provide cell service, texting calls, their battery backup and they have, or generator. With the small cells, we're actually not deploying them with a battery backup because we want to reduce the amount of equipment in the right of way. But if, should the power go out and our small cells go down, the macros will still be there, people can still call, they can still text, they just won't be able to stream data like movies or something like that.
Okay, just some more questions. Did you have any others?
No, I was trying to remember, there was a bunch.
Yeah, we have nothing aesthetics of what this even look like though.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will work very closely with the city as far as the aesthetics. We know that there's sensitive areas that have more ornate, you know, if we're on light standards, you know, but we work very closely with the city to make sure, because we call it a match of pole, we have some stealthing that we can do to make it less noticeable. We have a lot of vendors that we work with that are constantly coming up with new creative ways to make them look better. I wasn't aware that I would have needed some, I would have brought them with me, I apologize for that, as far as the actual, some of the examples we have for, for what we've done.
And one last question, if I remember, you said they need to be like at least 25 feet up, so, pretty much?
Yes, for us, the best height is anywhere from 25 to 40 feet.
I want to comment on the aesthetics for a second. One of the big pieces to think about on aesthetics is that that's one of the reasons why we were clear that, you know, the PSC poles here in the initial deployment, okay, that's fine, but that in our conversations with them right now, it's, if you're going to do something other than a PSC pole deployment, we really need to come and talk to the planning department and really need to discuss it. And if it's on a city-owned pole, which my understanding would be the majority of the non-PSC wooden poles, that actually has to come back for council approval to agree to rent the poles. So some of those aesthetic questions on city-owned standards would have to come back to council on that type of agreement. Also, as I mentioned at the beginning, figuring out the aesthetics for every neighborhood and what that would be on each pole would be quite difficult and premature without knowing if that neighborhood already has sufficient coverage from the, and capacity for the macro facilities.
Okay, so, back in, just one moment, January of this year, the city council had a presentation, which I just pulled up. If you give me a moment, I can pull it up on there because it does show pictures of aesthetics of what these facilities would look like, so if you bear with me a moment, I can pull that up.
Yes, we'll bear with you.
May I address the question about what other cities are doing?
Sure.
While he does this?
Any information you have, sure.
So I want to be honest about this, that there's, you know, in Washington state, there's not that many cities that have received a complete application from a carrier. So of the 30 cities that I represent, two, two, well, and Bellevue because they've already passed a franchise, but two have received a complete application from a carrier. Now, as I said, Spokane has it, Sea-Tac has it, there are other cities that are in the process, but the barrier is you have to receive a complete application. The carrier has to say, "We need to site in your area." And so it's going to be difficult within Washington state to say, "What are other cities doing?" They're trying to figure it out.
Can he page?
Yep, I can talk to this presentation. So what you see in the first picture is a Verizon deployment on a Seattle City Light pole. At the top are antennas and the bottom, there are two boxes, one's a radio box and one's a power disconnect. In the exterior to the pole are two conduits, one conduit holds fiber, the other conduit holds power. The conduits have to be approximately five inches off the pole due to the National Electric Safety Code and they have to be separated, the power and the fiber. This is an up-close picture, but it's somewhat similar, I think Gregor, to what the PSC pole looks, will look like as well. Correct, okay. And it's a Seattle City Light installment. Yep. This was exactly what I just described. This is a Clearwire deployment outside of Washington state, no, it says at the top Washington, doesn't it? I don't know where this Clearwire deployment is, but it's not one that I'm seeing now in any applications. Okay. Yeah, I didn't even know Redmond had a Clearwire deployment, but that's a macro facility, not a small cell facility.
It says micro cell.
It's, it says micro cell, but it's considered in the city of Redmond, a macro facility. This also appears to be a macro facility in the right of way, it's an AT&amp;T pole. I don't believe it's in Washington state and I can tell it's probably a macro facility because you can see the equipment off to the side in the green area and the size of the antennas. So as I mentioned before, the antennas need to be three cubic feet, those appear to be much larger than that. This looks like it's a California facility, but it would qualify, I believe, as a small cell facility. The left one might be Portland. So this is a side bracket mount facility with a cylinder attachment. I have seen photo simulations of this, but most cities I've worked with don't want this type of deployment and it may depend on the pole owner. PSC will allow it, but they also allow and like the flush mounted antenna rather than the side bracketed cylinder.
So let me ask a question about that. If it's on a PSC pole and they allow something that's aesthetically, it's aesthetically unattractive, they get to do it?
No.
Because we have aesthetics in ours that say they can't?
They still have to apply for a planning permit here and so.
The agreement, the agreement says that they can't?
The agreement says they have to apply for a planning permit.
So our planning permits specifically say what's allowed and not allowed and that's not allowed?
The planning permit would say what is or what is not allowed, they have not determined yet.
So our planning department has no code that they can say you can't do that? You just have to hope that they say, "I don't like that when it's ugly."
They're involved with this process, so they, they are thinking a lot about what this should look like aesthetically.
But we do not have.
But the code does not specifically say the aesthetic standards, yet.
Okay, so, I can encapsulate here. I think we have some need for more information. I don't think anybody here, Paul, I'm speaking for you, is ready to pass this on to council or you want to get some more, because I think we have some fears of what, even though it sounds like we have a fair amount of control of what comes, we don't know what's coming. And I think that's the fear factor and for myself, that there could be a lot of these, it's not just one, but if you're talking 500 feet apart, that could be a lot throughout the city. So that's, I think, where the fears, I'm not sure, you heard a lot of the questions, I think, and I'm not sure exactly how to say what you need to bring back, but it sounds, that's what I'm hearing from the three of us, is that we want something more brought back before we want to send it on to council. That, can you say anything else to that?
Yeah, I actually just want some time to think about a little bit more. You know, your locations where you have it right now, where you're proposing it, how many, how many macro cells does it serve in, with those, on those two roadways?
You're asking how many macro cells we currently have?
No, that these small cells would be augmenting.
I believe we have, right now, identified 18 nodes, which when we say a node, that's a small cell. However, of those, some are actually in the city of Semamish, so it would be less than 18 that we're looking at right now.
And, so we saw, the picture we saw earlier of, you called it a macro, right? How many do you have in that area?
I don't know, but I can find out.
I mean, what would you guess?
I couldn't even guess.
I'm just trying to get a sense of how much additional equipment, additional equipment on the roadway, on the furniture.
So currently in Issaquah, Verizon, Sheldon, correct me if I'm wrong, Verizon does not have any macro facilities in your right of way. They do have macro facilities on city-owned property in which you receive rent from those facilities, but they don't currently have any macro facilities in your right of way. I think Sprint does.
Sprint has one.
Has one and that, and Clearwire and that's the area that you annex from King County. So currently, you don't see macro facilities in the right of way, currently they're discouraged, I believe, from the right of way. And so I don't think that unless the code were to change, you would see that. And I do have a question about direction as we go forward because, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you, though you showed us photos of ones that were, you know, right of way.
No, those were not in your right of way, so.
Not in ours, but I mean, the example photos.
Those photos were photos of facilities in other rights of way.
Right.
And what we skipped over in that presentation was part of the point of that presentation. The point of that presentation was to gear the council up for lobbying efforts and so, well, no, to prevent the. Well, no, to prevent the, the loss of control. And so, those pictures were chosen to encourage the city council to lobby against what was initially proposed at the state legislature. So, you know, they were not the prettiest pictures of deployments.
That's fine. Again, what I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of, because I'm not a, I don't know, I don't know the engineering in this, and you talk about these macro cells, and, or what I would just call a tower, I guess, and, you know, how many do you own, is Horizon owned right now, that are, because I'm reading that these things actually, you said that they augment what's already there, they use the same radio frequencies, they're just, they create more capacity and probably reliability in the service in a given area, they're augmenting a super cell or a macro cell. So, is this, is this 10 times more equipment, is it 20 times more equipment, or?
Yeah, with macros, you know, they're anywhere from 80 to 120 feet, and they can cover up to 10 miles. And you can only have so many macros within distance of each other before they interfere. And that's one of the nice things about small cells is because they operate at such a lower power and at such a lower level that they don't interfere with the macro. So, it's a, it's a solution to help increase capacity, sometimes coverage, without having to, and because we can't get another macro in that area, we always want to try to do a macro first because it's easier and it doesn't take as much time. But then, we look at small cells as the next avenue, and then, as far as deployment's concerned, we always try to go with utility first, then light standards, then street or traffic signals, and then ultimately to, you know, putting our own pole in the ground. I mean, putting our own pole in the ground is the last thing we do, if we want to try to accomplish something. Answer your question?
Yeah, I did, I was just trying to get, regardless of the aesthetics of the photos that you showed, it just made me realize, we have existing equipment on the ground, right? And so, this, and, and I don't, I don't know how much that is or where it is, and this is going to bring more into our geographic area, how much more of that clutter are we talking about? And it sounds like, actually, the macro cells are often, are not, there's just not very many of them.
Yeah, there's, there's not that many, but again, because the capacity of them is so vast and they cover such a large area, but then, at one point, that capacity gets constrained.
Yeah.
And then, we just don't have the capability to put another macro in because it would start interfering with the other ones.
So, if it's okay, I would like some direction and inform you of a few other things. So, the first is, under state statute, we have 120 days in which to approve or deny a franchise. And there's some ability to extend that timeline due to council meetings, which we did. So, we hit the 120-day marker, but, but we are within the law because we had been scheduled for council meetings. It's possible that Verizon says, "We're not going to renegotiate this, you either have to approve or deny this franchise." So, they may say that, and then, it may have to come back to council, and council makes a decision as to whether or not to approve or deny it. I'm hopeful that that might not be the situation. I mean, what I'm hearing from you is saying is, "We need more information." But one of the other pieces I heard from you is a question about why not do a specific area, and that's something I want some guidance on here. If this was a franchise that was only for a, the initial deployment, would there be a different thought process here?
So, for me, if this had come with one installation, with that set of drawings, with aesthetics and what it looked like, and accompanying code language that says, "We're going to get what we think," it wouldn't have been an issue for me tonight. It's because I have no idea what this looks like, where else it's going to go, what neighborhoods, what residential aesthetic impact it's going to have, and I have no code that says that they're not going to build something ugly. So, if it has code, if it was one site, I don't think I'd have an issue with it. And aesthetic drawings of what it's going to look like, but too much of that is missing. There's a lot of unknowns here. This is a new thing in the right-of-way, and I don't understand it very well. And so, one touch and pushing up, saying that you're pushing up against 120 days, it's the first time we've seen it. Should have brought it six months earlier. I mean, that's the problem. You can't just come one time and say, "This is it, take it or leave it." We need to understand what it is, I don't get it. And I'm not ready to say, "Yes, this can be citywide, not now."
So, my question back, I guess mainly to the two of you, is, with what you've heard, could you put something together, excuse me, that you think could address all these issues for the next infrastructure meeting? I can give you the date on that, but, and get us better educated on that, so we'd feel better with what we're doing, since it is a brand-new thing, it is, it is an unknown. And, and would that work?
So, again, I can't speak for Verizon and negotiations and things like that, he can't either. Sorry. He's, he's not their lawyer and didn't, he doesn't have that authority, I'm going to just speak for Gregor because I've known him long enough now. But, the one piece of what was just said to me that would be a problem, honestly, is creating code, because code has a process, and it's planning code, which means it has to go to the planning commission, it is a long process, and it is not something that would be able to be done within 120 days or maybe even within a six-month time period. This is a project that the city has been considering, I mean, at least since January, when you saw that, but, but longer than that. The city's participated, the city staff has participated in meetings and, and with other cities as well, to discuss, "How are we going to look at deployment and what are aesthetics going to look like, and what can be acceptable and what can't be acceptable, and what could be acceptable on a preliminary basis?" You know, citing on PSC poles is what most cities are feeling more comfortable with. But I don't think we could get a code provision passed within any reasonable period of time because I think it's going to require a lot more work than, than the 120-days time gap or even what we can ask Verizon to toll for.
Yes. Okay. And then, let me just say, I guess, going back to that in the presentation that you pulled up, was, up until this point in time, people have geared us to, "This is something we're going to have to fight against." It's totally out of arc, you know, against the state legislature doing something that would be total out of our control, have no ability to control what it looks like or where it is. And so, we've been geared to this, as you said, that presentation was helped to gear us against that. Now, all of a sudden, it got turned around. So, so there's, there's a little bit of stuff you have to sort through, when you, when you're going down this street and all of a sudden, you make a hard right turn. So, I think that's creating some of that angst because that's where we were, where, you know, the industry went, they tried to go around that way and it didn't work, and I'm glad it didn't. So, now we're, now we're sitting here trying to do it individually, we want to make sure we do it right. And, and when you say it's good for the whole city, and it's going to be there, and there's no, as you say, there's, you know, nothing but good staff judgment to back it up, we have good staff and they have good judgment, but I don't know if we want to put that much burden on them at this point in time with a brand-new thing that we don't totally understand ourselves. Go ahead.
Thanks, Sis. So, we've had experience recently with bad code giving us bad outcomes, so not having any code at all doesn't give me a lot of confidence. If there's a way for you to go away and add something into the franchise agreement that would relieve our concern over aesthetics, go ahead and do it. Maybe that can be in there until code is developed, but to have nothing is, is a good answer. Not having code is not a good answer. We have to have some certainty on it.
So, that's a lot of rambling, but I'm hoping we've got enough there, unless you want to add anything else, Paul, to kind of represent that?
It feels significant to me to, to citywide franchise, first time, something new that's just emerging into the marketplace, and this is really the first and only opportunity we've ever had to talk about it or think about, and I appreciate all the information, you're obviously very knowledgeable. If there's no compelling reason to, to move it this evening, then, you know, I would just, I just want some more time to think about it. And if that's available, and then, you know, I have a little bit more time to, to understand this a little bit better, I think, probably even come up with some more questions, I have some, I have access to staff, or perhaps I have access to you. You know, I like the idea of innovation and providing better service for people. I mean, that, that's good, that's okay. It's, it's a business, it's a for-profit business, I get all of that. It is our right-of-way, and I just want to be very careful, I just feel like a very, of an obligation as a steward of the right-of-way to make sure that we do something new like this, that we're doing the right thing. And I'm not assuming here that this, there's anything evil or wrong here, that's not my assumption at all. It's just new, it's significant, first time we talked about it, can have a little bit more time to think about it, we'd come back next month. I'd love to be able to settle it one way or the other.
And I would just throw out that the 120 days you're talking about, both partners, I'm assuming, can take as much time as they want by agreement, that's just trying to force things to, to do something. So, if one partner wants to force a point, they're, they're always welcome to do that, but I'm hoping this would be a cooperative thing and continue to work together on that.
That would be my hope.
Okay, so, does that cover it all for us? All right, thank you, thank you for stepping up and answering those, those questions you can, and, and thanks for all your time on working on that agreement.
You're welcome.
All right. With that done, next up, we have AB 7486 Newport Way SR 900 to Southeast 54th Corridor Concept. I think we have a number of folks here that are going to be talking to us and presenting things here. We've talked a little bit about it Monday night at the work session as well, so we're going to dive in a little deeper here.
All right, thank you very much.
So, I'll just, we have a couple, I'll have everybody who's grabbing a microphone just introduce themselves quickly, so we know who's here officially, rather than me saying your names.
So, Brianna Ross, Senior Transportation Engineer for Public Works Department here at the city.
Okay.
Not sure if this is on or not, but this is Michael Lappam from KPG.
And then, we have Cecily Asato, who is also with KPG, who will be joining us shortly.
And Kurt Seaman, Transportation Manager, at the city.
Great, all right.
Okay, so...
Takeoff.
Great. We are here to talk about our Newport Way corridor project again, and want to remind everyone that, that this is a corridor concept, it's the 10% design level, it includes the cross-section or the various design elements in the corridor, as well as the intersections, and that's what we're considering tonight. We anticipate having an additional two years of design process to get into the details of design, being roadway elevations and walls, utilities, specific pedestrian crossing treatments, future transit, school bus stop locations, and, and corridor aesthetics. So, what we're at now really truly is this preliminary planning-level design, and, and we want to make sure that we have this as a starting point, being the, the cross-section of the roadway, and then the intersection controls that have been established in the design report, and, and then be able to design, get into the details of design as the next phase. So, just as a note, we have similar, same slides as, as Monday night, but we're going to hopefully provide some new information to go with them. And then, we're hoping that after tonight, we return to council on Monday, December 4th. So, project goals, our corridor concept accomplishes these goals by providing continuous sidewalk, continuous multi-use path, which appeals to a broad range of bicyclists, continuous bike lanes, which appeals more to the commuter cyclists, turn lanes, which improve vehicle access and accommodate future traffic, and also changing the character of the roadway to be more of an urban neighborhood-type road versus the, the old rural highway, and minimizing the roadway width to maintain as much of the hillside environmental areas and native trees as possible. So, we have our lovely pilot public engagement process, and this is the first major corridor project to use our new public engagement process. And I think that we can say it has been successful because about a year ago, at this time, there was a meeting in Tibbetts Manor about Newport Way, and it was filled with standing room only, and there were a lot of really upset residents there, and they were upset about the developments, they were upset about traffic congestion, and feeling like their frustrations with what was happening had not been heard by staff and council and the community. So, I would say that thank you to everybody in, that's been involved in this project. We've had great public support and great public involvement, which has taken time from their personal lives, and that's resulted in a really good feedback that we've received. And then, we've also had a lot of staff time and council time and administration time and our consultants. And taking this formal process has come to a point where, here we are, and, and we still certainly have some residents with some, some concerns, but, but we don't have a packed room, and I think that that's a lot of progress. And so, we have had a lot of opportunity to listen to our residents, also talk about some of the educational components behind the engineering solutions we're looking at and the benefits of the project, and the public really has been a part of the decision-making process. So, this has really truly been an exercise in balancing priorities. We have had folks that have been interested in, in keeping Newport Way a two-lane roadway, and we have also had residents interested in keeping Newport, in making Newport Way a five-lane roadway. And so, that's what we've encountered with every decision that we've made, in, in striking the balance to find the best corridor concept possible for this area and, and balancing those priorities for, for all residents. So, again, this is, as people left our most recent neighborhood meeting, they were given a sticker, and we've asked them, you know, we asked them, "Are we, are we going in the right direction, or are we not? Do we need to turn around and try again?" And, and I think there's, I mean, there's clearly consensus that, that we are heading in the right direction, and that's, that is due to, to the level of engagement that, that they've been involved in.
Yeah, we started, we started our traffic analysis by analyzing existing conditions in the corridor. Newport Way is a minor arterial, on a carries about 10,000 people each weekday, 10,000 vehicles each weekday. And one of the challenges of the corridor today is that during peak travel times during the morning and the afternoon, can be difficult to access the side streets and driveways, making left turns into and out of those places. Yeah, the main takeaway, we then went from existing conditions to 20-40 conditions. The main takeaway is that a three-lane section can accommodate the projected traffic volumes out there over the next 23 years, going to 2040. We, we're looking at adding left-turn lane to side streets and driveways at locations where we do not have need for access to stall center median, and our goal behind this is to, throughout the day, moderate the traffic or calm the traffic to reasonable speeds, but on the other hand, also maintain the travel speeds during the busy times of day as well.
As Brianna mentioned, part of the, part of our goal is changing the character of the roadway and making it a calmer place for people and pedestrians to integrate. What you see out here at the preferred concept is going to completely change what the existing concept is. The existing roadway has no, has no shoulders, no curbs, the verticality will slow traffic down, we really are making it a pedestrian, multimodal corridor. As Brianna mentioned, we'll have a continuous bike facility based on the NACTO, which is the National Association of City Transportation and Officials. We've designed the bike lanes through here, which is appropriate for a roadway that's less than 35 miles per hour, provides direct access for roadway biker commuters, and yet, we're pairing it with a shared used trail or a multipurpose trail for people of all levels, so children and families, it's really going to encourage people to start walking, you know, using that Mount St. Salmons Greenway and do that really continuous network of trail.
Yeah, for moving from the cross-section of the corridor into a more specific intersection by intersection, we've been looking at improvements to enhance vehicle access, again, moderate the traffic speeds, and facilitate safe pedestrian crossings. So, we went intersection by intersection, doing a close examination of what we think the best treatments are out there, considering all these various needs. We looked at various unsignalized intersections, roundabouts, traffic signals, and always stop throughout... stop throughout the corridor. And we did select a roundabout. Developers currently designing one at the Gateway Apartments entrance and also the main entrance to Spyglass as well. And here, I'm happy to say last time, some of these graphics weren't as clear, a little some of the white was bleeding onto white. So yeah, so much cleaner for you folks to see tonight. This is example, what we call a flying T. That helps left turn access into and out of intersections. And this can only be used at locations where there's a three-legged intersection. We have a successful example out in the corridor today, just to the west of 54th Avenue or 54th Street. And that's at the Montreux entrance there. So you can see the top images of that. And then the lower image is showing one that could be at 54th. And the main benefit is you can do a two-stage left turn out of the side street to pull into the refuge slash acceleration lane, you can see there, and then complete your turn by yielding to the second direction of traffic.
So part of the way of changing the character of the roadway and slowing speeds down and making it into more of a neighborhood corridor is doing a raised intersection. And this paired along with the roundabout Gateway, having another raised intersection at Pine Cone, sorry, Pine Cone and at the King County Trailhead. With the flying T intersections, we actually all work together with the medians to calm traffic and make it a better corridor for both, again, drivers and pedestrians alike.
Yeah, I'll go through this pretty quickly. This is the existing, or this intersection level service criteria for rating intersections out there, A through F. The main thing I'll highlight on this slide is that the city has an adopted level service standard of D. So that would be 25 to 35 seconds for people waiting on the side streets to enter the roadway. And at a signalized intersection, level service D would be 35 to 55 seconds for the average delay of vehicles traveling through the intersection. And here is existing intersection table showing the studies intersections on the left side, the traffic control at each location. And right now, all the intersections are performing at level service D or better during the morning and afternoon peak hour, which is showed there on the right and the left, there were two right side columns. This new slide here shows the 2040 intersection level service, again, looking out 23 years of land use growth along the corridor in the city and even the regional. And you can see that with the project improvements here, all the intersections would continue to operate at level service D or better, except at SR 900 intersection. There's another city project that could address the capacity needs at that location.
So again, I'm just going to quickly run through what we saw on Monday, but just talk about the benefits for each intersection as we go through it. So as Michael mentioned, the flying T through here, what we heard is from the residents at the first workshop, there's a lot of frustration getting out of this neighborhood. And the flying T helps clean that up. It helps you access safely until 54th, or sorry, excuse me, Newport Way. It also helps with the site distance coming up because around this corner, people are kind of coming around pretty quickly. It gives you a two-step maneuver, so it helps you get, maneuver and merge into traffic in a safer fashion. And that's example. So Gateway Housing, we added also another flying T through here, also to help access their neighborhood and to leave their neighborhood. The raised intersection at Pine Cone sets the tone for metering the first, really, hey, you're coming through a neighborhood corridor area. It's basically going to provide a left turn into the neighborhoods. And then for future development, it also lines up that new development. So it basically makes it a better alignment. Then we have the Pacific Elm Gateway Apartments with Spyglass, the roundabout. And then we have the driveway at Sammish Point, which is keeping it pretty much close to what it is today, except for removing the little island and allowing left turns in and again, a flying T out.
I'm going to correct you, sorry. So the Spyglass entrance will remain right in, right out only, as it is today. We do remove the island, but it's going to be C-curved. And then it provides the flying T into Sammish Point. The reason being that Spyglass has their main entrance on the roundabout, and this is really their secondary emergency access. And if we were to change the access at this inner, or at Spyglass's driveway, it would affect our ability to provide a left turn at Sammish Point.
And can you show us where the C curve would be?
It would be right on the left-hand turn lane.
Yes. Right. Oh, careful. C curve would be along here. Yes.
So next, we've added left turns, formal left turns into Riva and Summerhill. And these left turns will help residents enter into their neighborhood. And we've moved the crosswalk down to King County Trailhead and Riva.
I'm going to go back there a second. So those flying Ts are great, they do that. And then when you come to an intersection like this, you lose all that capacity, that ability. And so now you've got to cross basically three lanes of traffic to get out of your place with a left turn there, right? So how does that compare when we're doing all this work on these other intersections and we're making it because we realize you can't get there? And this is one intersection, it seems to me, that's lost capacity. And it seems like that delay could be pretty long at times, particularly as we go to 2040.
Sure. So it hasn't lost capacity because right now, they don't have left turn lanes. So we're providing, we're facilitating their ability to turn into their neighborhoods. I think also what you're trying to point out, though, is that we are unable to give them a receiving lane to turn left out of their neighborhoods. And so Michael's actually got some numbers on that that can help explain.
Yeah. Let's see. So it has gained capacity, adding the turn lanes into the site is definitely going to help folks out there get into the properties.
Helps them getting in, and I'm worried about getting out.
Yeah, so getting out. So the flying T is a low-cost, you know, efficient way to help people get out. Again, it can only be used at three-legged intersection. It's not that maybe those places couldn't get out, it's just this is better. And we heard a lot of, we got quite a few emails during the week about this location and as well as we got some comments at the Monday meeting. So I want maybe, if you're okay now, it's a good time, I'll go into a little more detail to try to address some of those comments and give you a little more background at this location. I'll start with more technical data to give some background, then I'll get into a little more of what the impacts of that might be. So Oak Crest on the south side of this drawing here has 55 homes. And the Riva development is planned on the north side, and that's approximately 40 town homes. Neither of these locations has any through access to any other connections, so it's kind of isolated for those homes. We've done, there's been a lot of activity in the corridor, so there's been traffic counts done at this intersection in 2015, 2016, and 2017. So we have some really good data at this location. And it's all fairly consistent about the vehicles entering and exiting the Oak Crest property. During the morning peak hour, probably from 7:30, 8:30, there's less than 15 cars making that left turn out that you just described. And during the afternoon peak hour, there's less than five cars making that left turn. That's during conditions when it's the most, most vehicles are on Newport Way corridor. Again, we looked at traffic going out 2040 years, or out to the year 2040, and that assumes the four main developments that are going on right now, Riva and Gateway. We also includes, you know, background growth from other parts of the city or even nearby cities. With those, all that background traffic, this intersection still operates at level service D during the busiest time of the day, the morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour. So we're showing that it's meeting the city level service standard, even 23 years into the future. And so we also got comments about additional traffic control at this location. The side street volumes are approximately a fifth of what I would need to meet the criteria to install an always stop. There's, always stops are really intended to be, and this is important takeaway, they're designed for an intersection where the traffic volumes are relatively balanced on each of the legs. Otherwise, what happens is one of the legs of the intersection, the two side streets will have low volumes, and you'll have long queuing on the main line. And the people will get up the side street, and there may not be anybody even on the side street. In this case, during the afternoon, there would be a car showing up to make a left turn about once every 20 minutes. And, you know, we'd be stopping, you know, 10,000 people a day would be coming to a stop at this location throughout the day. Other thing that can happen with an always stop at this location is, it's all about finding gaps in traffic is what the level service is based on. And right now, there's a traffic signal at 900, and that's putting people westbound into the corridor in a certain platooning fashion. By that, I mean, when the light goes green for one phase of the signal at 900, a group of cars will come into the corridor going westbound. And then the traffic signal phase will turn off and the next phase will start. And between that transition, you know, there'll be a space for a gap in cars. And what would happen with an always stop at this location is they'd all come up, they always stop, and they kind of pile up behind it. And with no cars in the side streets, or minimum, not no cars, but lower cars in the side streets, they'd basically be released from the intersection about every two or three seconds as they wait their turn. And that would create this effect of downstream from this location going westbound could actually make it more difficult for other driveways to get in and out because we no longer have that platooning effect where you have a burst followed by a gap. So that's one, that's kind of the potential downside of the always stop, is the low volumes on the side street, this location has not, don't feel like it's a good fit. And then there's also comments about a traffic signal. This has even higher traffic volume threshold to make it a good fit to install a signal at a location like this. So it's, we're farther away from something like that. And the downsides of a potential traffic signal here are we'd add additional delay to the main street. And also, we would likely see an increase of rear-end collisions as we're now stopping the flow of traffic on the main street. And not only just additional rear-end collisions, but we could likely see an overall increase in collisions at the intersection by installing a stoplight at this location. Let's see. Yeah. And then there's also the substantial cost of installing a traffic signal and maintaining it at the location as well. So that's some more background and hopefully response to your question as well as some of the other ones we've been hearing.
Right. And I wasn't trying to suggest any solution because I know all those have problems. I guess I'm just trying to look at the concept and looking at the flow. Because if we have these other intersections needing, where you can only cross one lane of traffic at a time and get your acceleration lane, and that's important, and I think those are great. And then this one gets going, the left turn lanes, it makes it easier to get in, obviously, but it makes it a lot more difficult to get out. Now I have to get across three lanes. And in that process, I could just see, I've done it before, other types of intersections like this. You got one opening, you got two, you never have a third. And then you got someone sitting in the left turn lane, so the person on the side street can never go because that person's holding that spot till they get the spot. And then when the next, before the next spot comes, the next left turner gets in there, right? And so I could just see sitting there for quite a while in those situations when that happens, particularly when the left turners are coming in and you're trying to get out because that's, that's at that third lane and they're going to have the right of way. So I don't have a solution for this, I'm just wondering, it's the one intersection to me of all the other ones, they seem that they have quite a bit of improvement. This one, improvement going in but not coming out, it just feels to me. And so I'm just, I'm just bringing that up, and I know you've been working at it and you have, you know, answers for those things, but I don't have an answer either. But I'm just kind of, I would, I would feel a little frustration here, I think, on how I'd be getting out compared to, you know, we're making it much easier for everybody else, right? So this is just my thought.
Thanks. So Briann, and just looking at the configuration, so to me, the design of it looked reasonable, I kept the turning lanes and all the rest and everything that's happening. The level of service that's predicted to be there when this is built and through 2040 is level service D. So does that mean, if that's a 35-second delay or whatever it was, every movement could expect that? Or do some movements have three-minute delays and others have 10-second delays? Can you explain that? Because I'm just trying to figure out, just from the Oak Crest side of it, is there the possibility that they end up with a significant delay, but every other movement brings the average back up to a D?
Yeah. So for example, at a traffic signal, we do the average, the average delay for every vehicle entering intersections measured. For this case, which we would consider a two-way stop control, where the main line does not stop, it only records the delay for the side streets. So the through traffic is not recorded, and the through traffic would be less, obviously. I mean, the left turns in would be less. So this is, when you say level service D, that would be for the side streets.
Okay. That's, that's great. So second piece to that question. So assuming this is the exact layout of the intersection, and it gets built, and reality happens that the Oak Crest Drive has a two-minute delay. If this is exactly the configuration, and there is now a two-minute delay, what can you do? What can you do once it's built if reality is it's a two-minute delay?
So we deal with these issues all the time. And you could go out to 900, and there's plenty of homes and groups of homes that enter onto there where the speeds are much higher, the volumes are much higher, and it's a five-lane plus facility. So, you know, there's challenges like this all the time. And the solutions that we look at, you know, we looked at a roundabout here, it's a tough, it's a tight fit, it would likely impact.
Oh, I mean, assuming, I'm assuming that is.
Oh, yeah. So, okay, so this goes forward, yeah. Sorry, thank you for the clarification.
So you have this, we build this, and then there's a two-minute delay out of Oak Crest. What do we do?
Sure. We could reassess then with, I mean, so even a roundabout could be back on the table. We could say, you know, we didn't think we could fit it. Well, okay, so then now it would come off the table.
This is, this is what we've got, but we predict it's a level of service D. And for whatever reason, it's not, it's two minutes. But this is it, no rebuilding.
Okay.
Now what do you do?
There is, so we could look at restricting right turns to be, or restricting left turns. We could maybe say the left turns out need to come down, and we could try to find maybe U-turn locations for them.
Left turn out of what? Which left turn?
Can't go right.
So Oak Crest would only be able to go right? Become a right-in, right-out?
Well, no, we would probably keep the lefts in.
Are you saying take out the left turn lanes on Newport?
No, we would maintain the left turns into the side streets. So those new left turn pockets, that would only be going against one direction of traffic. We could probably look at keeping them and possibly have the left turns out, restrict those, and possibly have those try to find a U-turn location down the corridor. We could look at, you know, I mean, consider everything they could try to look at again, maybe seeing if a signal makes sense if the delay is really hard that long. It would have all the, you know, still have those problems we talked about.
Right. So I'm, I'm just trying to say, I think this works. I just want to understand what a tweak might be. And while what I call is a tweak, the neighborhood may not call a tweak. But if what it is, is that Oak Crest then is a right into turn, right into town only because that crossing, the three-lane thing is not possible, I just want to get that out on the table. That's where this might go. Because this intersection design looks appropriate if, in reality, you actually get a level of service D. If you don't, I don't think we come back and look at a roundabout and a light and all that. That ship has sailed. This is it. So what do you do with this? And what you're saying is, at that point in time, out of Riva and out of Oak Crest, left turns may not be practical.
That's close for you.
Makes sense.
And I wanted to add, one more component that makes thinking about this intersection hard is that what looks, what the experience out there today is, is so vastly different from what the corridor experience will be out there after this project's complete. And so by, by adding these improvements with the new bike lanes, with the landscape medians, with the pedestrian facilities, in addition to our raised intersections and our roundabouts, that's going to change how this corridor feels. And even adding curb and gutter, which we don't have today, and the narrow lane widths, there's a lot of things out there that are going to change how it feels to be a driver on this corridor. And so as a result, we expect driver behavior to be different. And that's one of the main goals of this project, is to change that driver behavior. So as Michael mentioned earlier, we want to provide some traffic calming effects. And at the same time, we want residents to be able to get home at night without being stuck on Newport Way for 30 minutes. So we are striking this balance, that balance of priorities of trying to So we're striking this balance, that balance of priorities of trying to slow cars down during the off-peak times where currently today, they're driving, they may drive over the speed limit, but also be able to maintain some movement of cars at a reasonable rate in the evening hours. So that's, that's the balance that we're striving to strike here.
Thanks.
So, as we mentioned, we're doing another raised intersection at the Cougar Mountain Trailhead. And, you know, let me just iterate that at the close proximity to that Summer Hill-Oak Crest Drive, it will have people slowing down through here to get over this raised intersection. So they'll probably be going 25 miles per hour. So again, changing the corridor, changing the character and driver behavior. Next. With Bergsma Homes, where we, Bergsma Homes access with the neighborhood access, where we are making it into a formal, formalizing the driveways on the north side and having a two-way left turn to help access both Bergsma and the north side property owners. And then again, we have SR900 where we are having an appropriate length left turn lane based on Michael's signal analysis, and then adding the two-way left turn for people as they queue up. And then we'll be looking at this design in further detail when we get to the more fine-tuning things that pass the 10% design.
As we mentioned, we do have a grant funding opportunity that we believe we will be awarded in February for, for design funds. And then we kind of went into some of the questions previously, but we wanted to take this time to talk a little bit about the questions that we received. And again, we've, we've received a lot of really good feedback, some of which you guys have been included on and some of which you guys haven't. And the public has posed some really good questions. And I, I do really appreciate the time and effort that they have taken to stay engaged and passionate about this corridor and help shape what we've come to. And so I know that one major concern of the residents is having safety be a priority. And, and this is absolutely a common goal because this is our priority as well. You know, we are all looking to, how can we make this, this corridor the best corridor that it can be for all of the users? And so there's, there's certainly things that have been raised that, that are things to be addressed in this final design phase. Like I said, we've got about two years of design that we anticipate. So we are really just scratching the surface level with this concept. You know, this is really looking at the overall operational needs, but getting into driveway widths, you know, that is, we have a standard detail that we look at with that, but we also have turning templates that we look at to make sure that that's operational, especially where we've got some curves. Looking at King County Metro bus stops as well as school bus stops, we've had initial meetings with, with both of those parties and have agreed that there's a lot of opportunity to continue to collaborate going forward as to, you know, where bus stops may be located and what, if anything, can be done to facilitate those stops. And especially with our bike lanes, there is some opportunity there to potentially raise bike lanes or do other things that we can get into those details with design. Also looking at existing trees and what trees can we save on this, you know, currently it's a beautifully forested roadway. And so as we get into those types of details, looking at elevations and walls and stuff, that's where we'd get into, to those specific trees. And then site distance, I know that there's been a lot of concerns about, you know, being on a curved roadway with not being flat, that, you know, can we achieve site distance? And, and there's a standard that we look at. So at every single entrance point onto Newport Way, there's a formula for looking at based on the speeds of the cars and how far out does someone need to be able to see to be able to pull out onto Newport Way. And so we analyze every single driveway, every single intersection for the, for the site distance triangle, so to speak. And, and once we have that calculated, then that's also when we take, start to take a look at, at future plantings and what may or may not be appropriate in some locations. And then I know there's a question about street lighting. And certainly, I know that out there today, there's, there's some lights on the trails, those are shorter 12-foot high poles and only on one side of the street, and they don't light the full roadway. And with the corridor project, we would come through and meet our standards, which, you know, we have, we have code and standards that state the level of which we would light the entire roadway. And so there will be new streetlights installed along the entire corridor. So those are some of the questions that we received from the public, and those are, those are all things that we are going to continue to work on as we get into design. There was also a question about removing RFBs from the rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the existing crosswalks. And, and I know that's not the only time we've received that question. We weren't as clear in our last open house as to our intention there. And we have clarified it, I believe, in our design report. But we will be maintaining the RFBs at future crosswalks. And we are, in some locations, considering a potentially more robust signal, but that would be something that we have to look at again in final design, being that those, that would be a new technology for the city. So there's a lot of additional coordination to, to consider something like a HAWK signal in the future. And then also, we had a great question about, about the timing of the improvements. And, and I absolutely get there's a lot going on out there and with, with the developers all coming in at their separate times, with the King County Trailhead also coming in doing their project, and then with ours as well. And so, you know, we're trying to inform the residents as much as we can when we understand the developers' construction timelines. But as far as specifically the crosswalk at Oak Crest, you know, that would be moved to the King County Trailhead as soon as we had pedestrian facilities on both sides. And looking at prioritizing the King County Trailhead location because we've got the ability to provide a pedestrian refuge island there. So that could be a case where, you know, that would get moved with the RFB and potentially the pedestrian refuge island, but it could also be that the raised intersection aspect of that treatment would, would then come later with our corridor project. And then with Michael having already gone into the traffic signals and four-way stops, I think we kind of, I think that's covering most of the questions. And then I will be responding in writing to all these focuses as well following tonight, so.
Questions? Questions, Paul?
I don't have any questions at this time. One of the things I haven't heard recently that was really made loud and clear previously was, was concern about making left-hand turns and, you know, with, you know, with the traffic coming up behind. And, and I think that, and there was just, there was always, there was a lot of expressions of concern about, I'm concerned about getting rear ended. It happened once at 54th. And those, and I want to acknowledge that this concept, I think, addresses that very clearly by creating those left-hand turn lanes. I mean, that's very, very critical. And that just, I haven't heard that reiterated and that specific complaint and that issue which people experience and that, that this conceptual design does address that, which I think is important.
Yeah, that is a good point. We did hear that at open houses as well, so thank you.
And I'm, I've had the opportunity to be exposed to this a number of times now. This is, I think, my third time. Slightly, you know, you guys were here earlier and then I got to see the layout and meet with you, Brienne, and got to look at all this. And I've done quite a bit of trying to observe and think about and do a little bit more reading about this whole concept of changing the feel of the corridor. And the raised areas along with the roundabout definitely changes things dramatically. And I'm, I guess I do have a question. It would be, you know, why just those two locations? Why not also, you know, the raised is, seems like that's pretty significant to me. But I'm not studying that, it's just a gut feel. And did you consider that anywhere else to further kind of really try to shape that experience in that direction?
Great question. Yeah, and actually Sheldon wrote me that question as well. So we were looking at, at those two intersections at a minimum. And there are other intersections throughout the corridor that we will continue to evaluate for that opportunity. The unique part of the two intersections that we're considering is that they, they have crosswalks on them and there's not the flying T, that acceleration lane that we see in other locations. So those are the kind of the two distinguishing factors as to the intersections that have been selected. But we are going to continue to look into and, and consider what that might look like if we did a raised intersection with a flying T or if we did a raised intersection in a location without a crosswalk.
Okay, so that, thank you, that's a good point because I was, you said 10%?
Yes.
This concept, conceptual design represents like 10% design. But, and you've said at the intro here even that, that the, what you're looking for from council is, is a vote on, so to speak, the, like, the major elements here, the cross-section and the intersections. And I was partly under the impression that no other kind of significant changes were, would, you know, go where possible. So a raised, a raised intersection is still then on the table for other considerations?
So a raised intersection, to me, is a part of like changing the character of the roadway and less about how the intersection functions and operates.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
So, yes, so we are looking at, at buy-in from council for how the intersections operate.
Okay, thank you.
But, but certainly are going to continue to consider character change in how we can further provide traffic calming in that method.
Gotcha, thank you.
Marylith?
Good question, Paul. Brienne, one thing I forgot, I did talk to Emily about and I'm not sure if it got to you, just because there's a lot going on. I had asked for examples of what is it that will not change from this point on? What is it that could change from this point on? And so Paul just got one of those, that there could be additional traffic calming. So could you, I think would be really helpful for council in getting all the way to concept approval, which I think is really close, is knowing what's locked in and what is something that could still be discussed in detailed design. Traffic calming was one. I'm thinking the little ball belts that Oak Crest had concern about, that's another. The landscape planning that Oak Crest had concerns about, that's another. But this is what's locked in in a concept. This is all still up for final design.
Right.
These things that are character-changing, not intersection control. That would be a good list to have, I think. Because that was a really, that was a great question.
Yeah, and we can certainly add that into.
Just a slide.
Sure.
Locked in.
And, and to speak to that a little bit, the cross-section would be locked in. So the, the elements that we see.
It's a little bit why I wigged out when Michael said lighter roundabout, I went, huh?
Right, no, so.
Locked in, locked in.
Right, so, so the cross-section would be locked in. And then the method of intersection control is locked in. So, so the roundabout at Gateway, the flying T operations of the intersections at 54th and, you know, the two-way stop function of the intersection at Oak Crest, those types of things. So it's the operational function of the intersections combined with the cross-section that are locked in going forward.
I think, I think it would be encouraging for council to understand even what Paul just brought up is that additional traffic calming is not off the table.
Sure.
Just doesn't show up here. Still could be on the table.
Yes.
And so just to add to what Brienne just said, I think, I think it's really, really straightforward, very simple about what, what we're locking in, so to speak, here is, is really the, those two things that Brienne just mentioned, the cross-section, what you see here, the intersection control, which Michael's done a good job of going through. I think the other two important pieces are the access management. So how, where you're going to be able to access this corridor, where the driveways are, those kinds of things, that's the, what we've showed you here is what we're anticipating it's going to look like. And barring any changes to land use unforeseen that we're not aware of or something, but this is what, what we're going forward with. And then I think also importantly is the horizontal alignment and the fact that we're generally building this corridor within, along the existing horizontal alignment of the roadway and within the existing right of way. Those, that, that concept that we're building within the property, nominally the property that we have is locked in. And then beyond that, I think the, you know, pavement treatments and what the walls look like and landscaping and, and any number of other urban roadway design elements is the work from the 10% to the 100%.
Get down, slide.
Yeah, and it's sort of, in a really, really simple way, there's like, in my simple mind, there's three circles. There's this circle, it's the 10% design, which is what we've shared with you here. There's the other circle, which is the 90, which is the remaining 90% of the design from 10 to 100. And then the third circle is the construction. So we have done a lot of work to get to this 10%. We still have some major components here, which is called ESME, final design, and then construction. So just want to reiterate that, I know that probably most everyone understands that here, but, but it does come up sometimes with the public as well, like we're going from this to construction. And I just want to reiterate, there's a few really important steps there and a lot of work to be done before we're building a roadway out here, so.
So does that take care of our questions then for now?
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so time for audience comments. Anybody like to speak? And I think they took the microphone away from there, so why don't you?
Speak loudly.
No. Put that back there and you can grab one from over here. Put that one.
You know, put that up there.
Good, put that back, yeah. And so, why don't you grab, because that doesn't have a cord.
Okay, good evening. I'm Hart Sugarman, resident of Isaguay for over 21 years, living at 2550 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. When I look at the street, Newport Way, from State Road 900 to Lakemont, is it serving the local community or is it really a pass-through roadway for people coming up State Road 900 and not wanting to drive to I-90, but actually turning onto Newport to just take the shortcut as a throughput roadway? So my vision was always to have stop signs at every single intersection as a way to prevent that kind of throughput traffic and really focus on the local community. Also, the street has a history. Many years ago, it was the highway before I-90. When I moved here 21 years ago, the speed limit was 50 miles an hour. It was a rural roadway. Then it dropped to 40 miles an hour. And now currently, it's at 30 miles an hour. And I believe your plan is to even reduce it further to 25 in the, in the new design or is it staying at 30? Stays at 30, okay. So the roadway's a minor arterial, but I think we need to look at how we can reclassify this roadway as a residential roadway. The number of dwellings that have been built over the years, if you start from the Lakemont side and working towards the east, we have Summer Hill, sorry, Samamish Hills condominiums, Copper Leaf, Monahan, all built on Newport Way. We have the Samamish Point built on Newport Way. And now Gateway and Gateway Senior. And then we have Riva. Riva's actually, the buildings are actually going to be built right on Newport Way, right? There's no front yards or backyards. These are homes going to be built like a zero lot line. So this entire street, the dynamics of the street has changed from rural to very So this entire street, the dynamics of the street has changed from rural to very, you know, urban, urbanized residential street. So I think we need to really tone down the street to make it slow pace, not a throughput road, but allowing the local people to get in and out of their neighborhoods. Now, my concerns with this intersection, as I mentioned on Monday's meeting, is when I have to leave Summer Hill community and turn left and stop at that white line, at the stop sign, my visibility to the west is very limited because of the curve of the road. If the roadway's widened, it sets me back even further. I can't see. I would then have to creep forward and forward to get that vantage point to see out, to turn left. Once the Riva starts construction, those people are going to want to get out at the same time. So we're, we're going to be conflicting as we egress each neighborhood for that single break in traffic. And as I mentioned on Monday, there are 20 intersections from Lakemont all the way to Front Street. 20 intersections of which the ones that have four-way intersections have traffic lights. This is the first four-way intersection to be built on Newport Way within the city limits that will not have any traffic lights, which is fine. But I think we need to look at a four-way stop sign or an actuated traffic light that only actuates when a car triggers it to a red signal for the cross-traffic. And that is done very successfully in Vancouver, Canada. Another thing is if you drive on Newport Way and you go west of Lakemont, the very first street west as you drive into Bellevue is a four-way stop sign at 164th. It's been there for years and it works successfully. So I think it can work at our intersection successfully. The time that we wait in the mornings to get out of our intersection has increased steadily and it will continue to increase as the development takes its occupants with the, the people living in those areas. If, what I hear tonight is one suggestion to just restrict it to right turn only exit from our neighborhood, I don't think our community will approve that and I can see that being a protest. And in the morning, maybe what we need to have is a crossing guard, just somebody coming out from the city, you know, maybe it's not a police officer, but it could be a traffic enforcement person who just helps us get out. I mean, you look at downtown Seattle, all these office buildings have police escorts, you know, as people leave their underground parking garages, there's a police officer stopping the traffic flow on the street to allow the people to get out of the parking garages. Well, maybe we need help in the morning to have a crossing guard to help us leave our community. But I appreciate all the efforts in this. I think the design is great. We have some elements to, to make the final details work and the timeline for this to be accomplished, I know it's going to be in a piecemeal process because it's only going to be engaged as each development takes shape, right? Because Gateway will only build out at their area and Riva builds out at their area and Burisma builds out at their area. So it's going to be a very piecemeal process because of the funding that's available as well. But thank you very much for your, your input and, and your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Hart.
Hello. I'm Tina Conforti and I live on 1220 Oakwood Place, northwest Issaquah. Well, I saw a question before. Should the city council approve the, the concept recommending the design report? I would say no, you should not approve. Our residents cannot get out safe. And my priority, it is safety. I was in the broadcast for 25 years and that's all I promoted. It was safety for the public. And I think you, all of you, city council, you should be, have the responsibility to give to us this safety. I never saw in the session with the four, with the two, with the crossway without the stop sign. There should be a stop sign, a four-way stop sign. We can never get out from our area. First of all, if you see the crosswalk here, where are we going to stop? Are we going to stop at the front of the stop wall, of, of the, of the crosswalk? No, we can't. We needed to stop behind by law. We can't see once it's, we are behind the crosswalk to make a left turn. That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous and it's not, it requires a law that you stop behind a crosswalk before you make your left turn. We can go over and cross another child and kill another child. This is unacceptable. It's, oh, I, I believe if you could show me a similar, a road in Issaquah or in Bellevue without having a four-way stop sign or a stop light, it's unacceptable to hold the residents in our area. Then you talk about, you talk about, Mike, I think he mentioned something about there are 10,000 people driving each way. That's on what time? At 2:00 in the afternoon and maybe 10:00 in the morning? That's not on peak time. I believe it. Over 400 apartments and plus the townhouse and plus the senior homes being built in. You can never make a number of cars of the volume. You can't. They're not there. You come back at 6:00 in the night when we have a line all the way up by 54 sometimes. So by putting stop, a four-way stop sign, you reduce the risk of all of the accidents over there. Because we can get out the same and the other car, car, they can move along when there's no car coming out. So I am sorry, this is unacceptable on behalf of all our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
My name is Mary Lynch and I would like to talk a little bit about the process and go back a little bit. First of all, there were some comments made during the earlier agenda bill about how they've been working with city staff for over a year, year and a half. And that's what we found has happened with this. Mountains to Sound Greenway by city staff was put on the north side of this road without any input from the public. Those of us that live out there now currently have no parks and no sidewalks on which we can ride our bikes or our children can play. Yet you want to put the Mountains of Sound Greenway on the north side of a major or a minor ulterior without adequate safe crossings. And you want to move, and I think it's right, from a safety standpoint of view, Oakcrest crosswalk away from the curve. But that means we're going to have to walk down to the trailhead with our little kids and our bikes to cross at the trailhead with possibly a beacon, but not a hawk. And our behavior I see around Issaquah is drivers do not stop for the yellow. They do not honor the crosswalks and people in the crosswalks. So you can say you're going to change behavior, but until Issaquah takes a much more forceful way of educating drivers, you need hawk systems to make people stop. Because most people, 85% will stop for a red. Now, there's still those that run through it. We know that too. But anyway, we were never asked where the Mountains of Sound Greenway went. And I still think it should be on the south side. And if you accept this concept as it is, that means it will always be on the north side. And when you get out to the other end, why would you put a Mountains of Sound Greenway on the north side past South 54th? There's nobody that lives there. And your experience is you're putting people up against the freeway. So I would like you to look at where the Mountains of Sound Greenway is going to be put for the, for the total corridor, that going back. Riva, when we first started looking, we're involved early on in the process with the other communities who are going to go wherever it was, it was always going to be a staggered intersection. It was never going to be at Oakcrest. When and who decided without public input? Because when it came to the development commission, we were told, this is the way it is. When we gave our concerns and inputs, we were told, this is the way it is. We as citizens had no input at the development commissions. And that's why we attended and we spoke up about needing the moratorium, is there were things in the central area plan that allowed things to get way beyond and etched in stone. So when we got into public review, we were told, it's it. You have no input. So I want to say, why can't we go back to Riva and look at redesigning this? If we already know it's designed wrong, everybody else is getting a flying T intersection. Why can't we have our flying T intersection? Why can't Riva have a flying T intersection? That would be the easiest way to get this resolved and maybe help let us get to work. The other thing is drive up your economic development in Issaquah so that those, the majority of the 55 homeowners, and most of those have three and four people working in their homes. Most of them work in Seattle and come out of our development in the morning and turn left in Seattle. I'm one of the few currently, and that's because of the downturn that's working in Se-, or working in Issaquah and turn right. Most of the people turn left out of there in the morning. And it is almost impossible because when you're coming from S-900, they're flying and they will still fly over the raised embankments. Because I've been up in other places where they, they, people still do that if they know it's there. But look at the process that was used. And I want to say that coming with this concept drawing and starting last summer, it was refreshing that I think the KPG actually listened to us and felt like our voices were being heard. But we didn't at the development commissions. But I'd also say going forward, this type of process, we had to intend to get our voices heard four to five meetings during the summer, all at once, or we weren't going to be heard. And you have stretched our neighborhoods to the limits and it's not appreciated. So I would say, review the process going forward, use this, but stretch it out between community meetings. Make sure that you hear what we're saying. And going forward with construction, I still have not seen the best practices for construction. And since this is going to be piecemealed, how are we going to get to and from our homes? How are we going to walk along here? And we need to see best practices for construction and how we're protected. I did like, I would have liked to see a sidewalk built over on 7th Avenue with the Locust project, but at least they have the orange barriers creating a pathway and some sort of protection from, that's 25 miles an hour they have it. We had plastic cones for the anti-aircraft creek out there, protection from them. And I will say, Tony tried to get the speed limit down to 25. We had very little police presence out there, so during construction, it was more than 25. The other thing I would like to, to say is because of the amount of time we spent this summer, the other thing we got, oh, I know, the, the roundabout, that also was forced on us. We had no say-so on what was happening. And development staff worked with the developers to decide where that was going to go. And it wasn't until this meeting and KPG coming in, beginning to hear our voices, where we're able to get the roundabout moved back onto the Wolf property without really, I mean, they're, they're still going to have to give up property with the Samamish Point or with the spyglass. But the original roundabout was going to take their entrance and also close off the west entrance of, of Samamish Point. So the other good thing is they listened to us. They went back and have come up with, I still don't think it's a real good roundabout because there's not long enough lead-ins to slow traffic down, but it's probably the best solution we're going to get. And it is back on Wolf property where it should have been to begin with. So I would like to see in the accounting of this project that monies and their time be charged to the developer, as is whatever we're going to do with Riva, to the developer and not to the public. Because this should have been done early on. If it had been done right, the developer would have paid for it and not the, the staff. And we already heard last year that the city staff had spent about $150,000 of engineering for that roundabout last year. This was before they were even brought in. So they did listen. I do think they were heard and people appreciated that. The other thing that's not been brought up is the concurrency for this corridor from S-900 to Lakemont is based upon a three-lane road the entire length. That's what your concurrency model is based on. So all the concurrency that's done with Gateway and Riva is based on a flawed report because we aren't going to get a three-lane road the entire length. And I still, and they really didn't look at the interim intersections. And I know they've done some with levels of service, but I don't think you know the true traffic that's going to be impacting Issaquah in 40 years, let alone in the next 10. So going forward, I would hope that some of these things we continue to be involved with and we can come back and give our voice before etched in stone. And I would like to definitely see best practices and the, the existing community put first, first. And I would like to see the Mountains of Sound Greenway location revisited to consider on the south side for those of us who have no parks, who have no flat grounds and that was not part of our original development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'm assuming that's all? All right. So, time for discussion.
Sure.
Mary Lynn?
I have any voice left.
Looked like you were anxious.
Scratch it out. So just for the discussion of the corridor concept, I am ready to move ahead with what we have now, which is the 10% version of the drawing. But I did want to address some of the public comments that we heard as well. I do think we need that increased focus on, I think Brianna mentioned, a hawk signal or potentially a new kind of signal that we don't use. If we're truly going to move to an urban area that promotes pedestrian crossings, I think we need to go that way. And so I was glad to hear that you mentioned that. As far as field fits go, I think that the community expressed some concerns with driveway widths, road entry into existing suburban-style subdivisions and trees and also the ability to have clear sightlines. So I know that's something we can do as we get further along in design. I think it's important. I'm excited about the King County Trailhead and pedestrian refuge. I'd like to see pedestrian refuge included in as many corridor designs that we do. I think that is an excellent concept. I would have loved to have seen even maybe a little bit more in this one. If I just go to the process that you ran, Brianna, this summer, I have to say it's one of the best processes I've seen in a long time. I think for a neighborhood that feels under siege, as you can hear this neighborhood feels like, while you did an amazing job, there's a lot of emotion about actually things that have happened in the five to 10 years leading up to this. So good job on your process. I think it was good. But I agree tonight that there were a lot of decisions made in isolation, one parcel at a time, and then we jumped in and we did a corridor study. I feel this, I'm glad the city's got the Gilman Study coming next and hopefully the next piece of Newport after that. But our city should have had these corridor studies done before the decisions got made for us, parcel by parcel by parcel. We are behind. And that's not a criticism, that's just a fact. We're behind. And if previous councils didn't provide the money, bad on us. But we are behind and that has caused a lot of pain, especially in a neighborhood that gets four major development projects, anti-aircraft creek and their entire street redone in a period of five to six years. That's, there is no doubt that their pain is real, that their, what it makes them anxious and upset is real. So we have to take a hit for that. We have to understand that this is why they are here still tonight saying, this didn't work for us. That makes sense to me. We need a plan for making sure, or we need to assure the existing residents that as this plan moves forward and we move into developers constructing some pieces and the city coming back and do the others, that we want their neighborhoods to function well, efficiently, safely, all the rest of it. I asked about the, what could we do with this configuration in this corridor at that location for a specific reason? We're going to build it that way for sure. So I, what I heard is that if it's not working, there may be a proposal to restrict turns. But I also heard that maybe there's an option for some other configure, other control that could be used to trigger a stop at sometimes. I don't know what's... I don't know what's available or what's possible, but we need to make sure this neighborhood, when this is all done, feels like they are, have access and they're safe with that access. So, don't know what that looks like, except that we do know what the intersection configuration looks like. Because that's locked in. That's what, when we say yes, that's what we get. But if, if we come to it and find out that they are waiting six and seven minutes because they can't do something, I'm committed to saying, then we need to help them. Because that wouldn't be okay. That wouldn't be level of service deed. And we're telling them they're getting level of service deed, we need to make sure they get level of service deed, no matter what. I think what made this so challenging is that, and going back again, we can't revisit this decision, but there's a piece of land on one side of the road that's designated urban and a piece of land on the other side that's suburban. And we are going with an urban standard, which I think will be good for the existing neighborhood as well. But it's awkward to, when you do that. So that made that particularly challenging, and I think you've done a good job with your design. My opinion is, we should lock in what we have and move ahead. So that's, that's what I had is, move ahead.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, engineers, I gotta start out by saying one thing. You all, you three are all engineers, right? But it took this engineer to talk before I heard the phrase horizontal alignment. So good job. You got you guys talking to the public, that's good. And, and balance, competing requirements, competing needs. I think that's a difficult mix to work within, with a lot of emotion as well. And I do appreciate, and I, I've sensed from all of your work, a real sensitivity to not only the residents, but kind of your own profession. And sticking with what I know, you've been trained and have lots of experience in how to do this and do these in the best way possible. I've felt that quite a bit, that you constantly were striving for, you know, doing the right thing. And it can be really difficult because you can't satisfy everybody. I, as I said earlier, I do accept that this, as proposed, will change the feel and the nature of what happens as a motorized user. I use this roadway all the time, both motorized and non-motorized. So it's, it's not just up to my imagination. I do use, I do see what the speed limits are, both in front of me and my own, when I go through that reader board. So I have a really good idea of, of kind of what it is like to be a user of the corridor. There's no doubt in my mind that what we're going to do here is going to change. But I'm going to echo, I agree with Mary Lou and a couple really key points that, and there's some of these design details that'll come later, like what is the actual control for pedestrian control later on down at the, that you still have to do. I think that's, that's an excellent one. Very interesting comment this evening about the, about the Mountains to Sound Greenway. And I wanted to ask you one question. It seems like I've heard somewhere in this dialogue about the green, the Mountains to Sound Greenway as an organization, actually, do they have any comment or input on this at all? So I'm going to stop right there and let you answer that.
Yeah, absolutely. So I did meet with the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust and had a few conversations with them. And I also met with the City of Bellevue. The reason being that the Mountains to Sound Greenway is a regional trail that extends from Issaquah and someday all the way into Seattle. The City of Bellevue is currently designing their Mountains to Sound Greenway gaps. And so the City of Bellevue has the Mountains to Sound Greenway on the north side of their corridor, which is where it would meet up at Lakemont. And one thing that Mountains to Sound Greenway stressed as something that we, as their priority is consistency. A regional trail user shouldn't be able to feel the difference between City of Bellevue and City of Issaquah. A regional trail user should have a consistent experience throughout. And so that was one, one key that was important, important to them. They are quite happy with the corridor project as a whole. They're very excited to see this gap filled. And they see the, the improvements with both the multi-use trail and the bike lanes as, as providing some real asset to the regional corridor. So that's, that's kind of where they weighed in on.
Okay, so, all right, so, okay, so you did have some interaction with them.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. So as, as a concept design, with the elements including, where did it go? Including the horizontal alignment, but the intersection controls as proposed, the cross-sections as proposed, and the access management, and the right-of-way. Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this going forward with, with the additional comments that we've, we've already shared.
I agree with a lot of what's said also. I think, but I disagree with some of the things, I have some other ideas. So definitely what Mary Lou said on, on the neighborhood and what this has happened over the last, you know, 10 years in particular, has been tough. And definitely want to make sure we take, fix that as best we can. I think the process has helped. I think they are finally being heard to some, to, to a better extent than before. So that, that's important. So that's been a good change. And, and their safety in using that. They are on a long, thin corridor with nothing but a long, thin corridor. Most of our other neighborhoods are shorter. You get out of them, you hit something. This is a long, thin corridor that you're kind of stuck on. There's no way on or off that except at the two ends. So it does create something very different. So slowing people down is, is a tough thing because I have other places and soon as you go through that roundabout, boy, you're back up to speed. Because our cars are quick nowadays. They're not all cars. They ride back up to 40 miles an hour in about three seconds. So it's, it's easy, it's not easy to slow them down on a long, thin corridor. I, I, my biggest concern is that, well, I'm back a little bit. I brought it up already on the one intersection. I think, so a lot of these intersections have done some good things. I do have concerns on, on a couple of them that, that aren't quite there yet for me. And I understand, when you look at the numbers and this and that, whatever, that, you know, other, other normal standard features you go to don't really work. Because I think a four-way stop there with, you know, you know, all through the day for, for a short period of time when it's really critical, is, is, is a tough thing to do. So I understand that very clearly. But I'm not going to say, I don't have an answer, but I still feel that if I was in that neighborhood, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be very comfortable with, with this happening. There's some, something else has to occur in those places that we're blocking people in. And I don't know the history. Someone mentioned that Riva's turned it into a, you know, a four-legathon. I don't know the history on that with, you know, planning and development and so forth. And how it got there, you know, with what Riva's done, I haven't paid attention to. But somehow we got it to where it is and maybe we can look at that and, and see. But that, that intersection and a little of the other ones do bother me on neighborhood access or ingress and egress. The left-turn lanes make it great, but if I can't, I can only get in, I can't get out, it doesn't do me much good. And I assume when Riva builds out, they'd have the exact same feeling. They're just not there yet, right? And I want to talk about bike lanes a little bit. You already know. This is Mountains to Sound Regional Trail. I've talked a bunch with them and they're not, you know, they, they have a lot of support for getting this gap filled, but they're not jumping up and down saying, this is exactly the way we want it either, I don't believe. And I've talked to them about bicycle protection and so forth. We're talking about Vision Zero is, you know, the new mode in our city hasn't adopted Vision Zero, I know that. But we try to use a few pieces of it here and there where we can. And we, and it's definitely a new thing on how to protect bikes, bicyclists, and how to protect the people from bicyclists. Because people are threatened by bicyclists going fast, as bicyclists are threatened by cars going fast, right? So they're kind of in that middle ground. I think it's a perfect opportunity to create the protected bicycle lane as a major piece on here. And I think we're missing that opportunity. I think the bicycle groups, the, the ones that really do travel the corridor as, as their freeway, right? Because they don't have the freeway. So this is their freeway. And, and they're, they're smoking, you know? Any of those downhill runs, they're going. Because they're usually trying to get somewhere, they're not sightseeing. So I think we need to give them protection. And we have not taken that into consideration. They did not come to our meetings. I know they were invited and they didn't come. And so we didn't get, we missed a voice there. We got the neighborhood voice, but we didn't get that, those, those pass-through bicyclist voice, I don't believe. So I, with a few of those concerns, and particularly with not having protective bike lanes, I, I can't support this as a concept to go forward at this point in time. I'd, I'd have to really look back and have someone prove to me why we couldn't do that. And I know there are some things of, of, you know, concerns of fitting things in in the total road width. This is not just, oh, let's just put them in, we have lots of room. I know it's not an easy thing done. I know emergency vehicles have, have some concern. But I still think it can be done. Because this, as people said, this isn't a three-lane road. The design is a two-lane road. And it happens to widen in a few spots where we make some left, some turn lanes. But basically, other than those places, we don't have a median, we don't have that three-lane road width that is taking all that width up. So I think it is there. And it can be done. I think we need to be a little more creative and step up and try to think a little more into the future than historically what's been done. This is a fast, you know, even 30 miles an hour with, with cars, it's not, it's not a, you know, residential street at 25. It is higher speed than that, then I think we need protective bike lanes. So I will support this going forward at this point in time without that and a few of the other concerns on, on some of the intersections. Because those are done deals. That, that's a done deal. Those aren't going to be, you know, additional traffic calming that you can just slow that down with. So that's, that's my, so it's going to be a, a two to one going forward to council next December 4th, right? So we will, we'll send it to council with a two to one going forward. But I think, I think we need a little more work. This is, what gets built here is a 50-year live with or longer. And no one can make me say that we have to speed up the process now because of one little thing and not get it right because we're going to live with it for 50 years. I don't care. I mean, we need to get it right. We're going to live with it. So if we need to back up a little bit and takes a little bit longer, that's, that's just fine with me. Because that's, that's what we got to do. It's a long, it's going to be there and it's going to, you know, all these folks and maybe their grandkids who will be living in their house will be living with this for a long time. So I, I think we need to take another look and get that voice heard. And I'm happy to do that. And I'm happy to, to try to get a hold of some bike groups and, and I'll continue my conversations about in Sound Greenway. And I don't think they've been asked the question about the north and south part. I know they want some consistency and it's on the north side in Bellevue. But just because Bellevue does something one way doesn't mean we have to do it exactly the same way. That's, that, changing the side of the road does not change the, the trail. That's not something that does. It's other things that change the character of the trail. So I don't know. But I think just because Bellevue's done something first in a piece, that doesn't mean that's the standard. Because this trail doesn't just go here to Issaquah. It goes all the way to Snokeville Pass and beyond to the east side. This is a long piece of trail. So, and this is just a piece of, but it is our trail through Issaquah. It is our main east-west route. If you're not on the freeway, this is where you are. So I think we need to get it right. So that's where I am. I'll pass that on when we take it to council on the fourth. Okay? You have something?
Just a clarification. So I'm hearing two to one to approve. The question is, I presume, regular business?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Just want to, just want to clarify.
Yeah, in this case, regular business doesn't even need to be questioned.
That's what I was expecting. But I just wanted to make sure that that's what the intent is.
Since we already had one touch with council and, and, so regular business, and I'll, and I'll talk, I'll address that. So can the other council members, who may bring it up.
Can I also ask what level of presentation you guys would expect at the next council meeting?
Should I'm in? But I'd say, any of the questions that folks have a little bit, I think we need to address a little more. This, the presentation you have here, the Was Seen at Work session, so I'm not sure how much you want to.
Yeah, my, my thought is you probably did not have to do the whole presentation again this evening, but the answers you did to the questions was good. If you can add a slide that says what's locked in, that'd be good for me. I would think a shorter presentation.
Yeah, because we've seen it once already.
And then give Bill time to talk, to talk.
Yeah, because I'll, I'll have to do the minority opinion.
Because he's going to talk.
So, are we clear on?
Well, I do, I do like, I, I think it's okay to, personally, I think it would be okay to repeat what you did just when you guys did the back and forth and you talked about the different elements as you went, as you stepped down the corridor and you talked about that. I think that's okay. This is going to be, this will be the first time for some people to hear that. At the very beginning, you actually did kind of list some of the things that are still going to be finalized in design. And I, and, and so I know it was already kind of part of what you were thinking, so I do agree with what we've just kind of said already to kind of make those things very clear. But I, but as far as, as far as what we do at the regular business meeting, I, I think it's very valuable to hear the description and of, of the design elements.
So we'll, I think that's clear direction. I think we'll take, we'll take what we showed, shared with you tonight. We'll maybe add a little bit about what's locked in and reinforce some, some of the question discussion, maybe tighten up the, the presentation that we gave. Take out a little bit and just sort of the meat of it and come back to full council on the fourth with that. It shouldn't be more than, you know, 10, 10 minutes or so of our time. And then the last, the rest would be for council questions and discussion. Does that sound?
Yeah, and the one thing I think would, would help in it's here too, it sure helped me, and I don't know how we can do that in front of council, but we're seeing just pieces. And somehow, when you see the, the whole, it makes a lot more sense. And I don't know how we can do that because you have a wonderful map, but you can't do that very well in, in, with council there. But it sure can, can see that. Because otherwise, you know, somehow it gives some, some distances between this intersection and that one or something, you know? It's like, okay, this is a quarter mile, this is a half mile, this is 300 feet, right?
Sure, we can, we can do something like that.
Something like that to give a better feel for overall from end to end. And then, and I'd like to also just, you know, what, we're really talking to one piece, but what's the rest of the piece to our boundary, right? What not doing, so then we have another X mile of road to, to Lakemont, right?
One more, actually. Kurt, I would appreciate it if there was also a slide. And these folks have come to meetings for months, if not almost a year on the project. I think we should capture their concerns and say that there is some, there's a lot of good feeling in the community about the project, but this does not get us to 100% satisfaction with everybody. I just want to point out that these things are still being asked for. Because I'd like to acknowledge the fact that they have some valid concerns. And so if that is in there, I think that would be good.
Sure.
Thanks. Just in case they don't want to come to their 19th meeting on it.
And then I have one more point of clarification that I was going to try and do earlier, but I, I missed it. So there was a brief conversation about the cost estimate on Monday night. And I, we were not entirely accurate. So the Traffic Task Force original number that you guys saw for the project was $7 million. And that included all of the developments doing their frontage improvements. We, at that time, had an independent cost estimate done. And independent cost estimate came in at $22 million. And so at that time, you may have remembered that we talked about how we had this collective group of projects and the collective total at that time matched between the independent cost estimate and the original estimate that was floating around. It was just that some projects projected higher costs and some projects projected lower costs. And so it ended up balancing where we could say that, no, the total for the potential traffic bond at that time was still an accurate total. I wanted to explain a little bit where we're at now. So for design, right-of-way and construction, we're up to 38.7 million or, no, yeah. And the key differences are that this cost estimate does not assume that Bergsma will be building anything. be building anything. You know, there was the Bergsma Development Agreement, which would have built the full roadway improvements. And now, at this point, we have, we've not even assumed that Bergsma will build half because of the phase that they're in and they're permitting. They're at that earlier phase. We're not sure, it's not a guarantee that they're going to come in and build for sure. The other thing that the other cost estimates never considered was the culvert crossings and upgrading them for fish passage, which was a newer regulation that came down. And so there's significant cost, just as Anti-Aircraft Creek was done this summer. There's five other creeks in this stretch. So there's that too, that has been added as a part of this corridor project based on those requirements. And then the other thing, of course, is projecting out into the future. So, you know, knowing that we're not building this today, that, you know, we're likely building this at best three years from today. And there's been extraordinary inflation in both construction costs and property values. And so in the areas, knowing that we do have areas of purchasing some property, we have escalated that accordingly. And of course, that was much different even back in 2016, when the original cost estimates were done. And then also with the construction cost going up significantly in this last year. So I wanted to kind of correct myself and provide a little bit of additional background there.
So question, when you say that $38.7 million, that'd be our cost for that, but that does take into account the known parts that developers are going to put in, right? The roundabout and...
That's assuming that Gateway builds the roundabout and that assumes that Gateway builds in front of the senior housing, their half-street improvements, not the full street.
It's not in the $38 million.
That's not included.
So the known developer stuff is out of that 38, is not included. So that's additional stuff we won't be spending, right?
Correct.
Because they'll do it.
Correct.
Thank you. And not the unknown developer.
Correct.
Great. Anything else? Are we good on this one? Okay. So with that in mind, we have actually two things left. We could have project updates. And then I'm going to add another one on here for a slight discussion of process with transportation benefit district. Okay? So let's do project update first and then we'll add a little discussion on transportation benefit district process, not details. Okay? So everybody's got their list. Sheldon, what do you like to highlight for us?
Is it possible, Sheldon, to put it up on the B1, too?
No, no. Didn't know if you were saying something.
So I guess one that I'd like to highlight is, they're down on this, didn't show up on the whole screen. It's...
[inaudible]
That one?
Here.
No. Kind of lost it.
Take a few more. Take some of that information.
There you go.
Thank you. So the, I guess the one project that I'd highlight is the larger project that is going on right now in the city, and that's the Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project. Piling is all-in for the foundation of the bridge. The fill material is completely placed over on the east roundabout and for the trail separated great crossing, and so we're monitoring for settlement so that preconsolidation happens. They're actually, the contractor has been working for the past week to two weeks, putting in about a pile cap every few days or so. So they only have probably four pile caps left to put in. That means rebar and concrete pour. And then once that's done, then they're looking at January for the first girders to be coming in, the new bridge. Right now, it's anticipated in the schedule that the primary consolidation settlement associated with the fill material on the east side is expected to be completed towards the end of January. So that's what's tentatively on the calendar. And then, of course, after that, there's all sorts of other work that's going to start to occur in that area.
So that sounds like it's moving along, is it on schedule?
It's moving along well. We've had some delays, utility conflicts, delays on the utility companies getting out there, doing some stuff. And then we've had some slowdowns just due to logistics of traffic control and other items over in the Lake Drive area.
But it's on schedule?
It's pretty close to on schedule. We're still looking at trying to get the road open towards the end of next year.
Okay, great. What would you like to highlight?
Nothing else to really highlight. If you guys have questions about anything, I'm happy to respond to them.
Okay. Well, I see we're working on the flashing beacons in front of City Hall here.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, so they're going in. We got another one in earlier over on Second, right?
Second. We also did Front South at the 600 block.
Right.
And then we're also working in the area of Juniper and Seventh.
Sheldon, there was talk about two works, two studies that were done this year. I think one was, it's getting worse. One was the roundabout at Southeast 33rd and a possible reworking of that, and I don't know, are those two studies on here somewhere?
You have the Costco access study, the 10th Avenue, that crossing study, yes. We're still under review. The other one was the study about the Southeast 43rd Roundabout.
Yeah.
And it did recommend that we could close the bypass lane.
Yeah.
But we need to take that information and now incorporate it into the update of the Capital Improvement Program and TIP.
So I think I sent you an email, but I might not have. Did I send you an email?
No, you did. I just haven't had opportunity to respond to it. But go ahead, ask some questions.
I might have copied Bill. Copy on. Okay, so the question is, there was a development on East Lake Sammerson that was built before the roundabout.
Yes.
And then the roundabout was built, and then that development has subsequently discussed a lot of issues they have. And is it possible to combine looking at access for them in conjunction with a slip lane, so that whatever we do might improve their situation as well?
Yes. Now, as far as the access, one of your questions also was contemplating the possibility of having full access restored to it.
That's probably not likely.
And that's, yeah, not probable. The Development Commission and the conditions in development actually recognized the proximity of that driveway to the intersection of 43rd and East Lake Sammerson Parkway and specifically called out that if the, if necessary in the future, that that would be restricted to a write-in, write-out.
That would be great to get that piece in writing.
Right.
And then the second piece is...
And then the other is, is we will, as we develop the CIP in a conceptual fashion, look at what we can do to improve their access to the best that we can.
Yeah.
And we're going, actually, I was talking with Brianna about that the other day, as she'll probably be the one developing the CIP concept, and trying to creatively think of a way where we can improve their entry and exit.
Even if it means just giving them like a way to move out of traffic and enter.
Yeah.
I've done it a couple times myself. It is scary, as I'll have to come out and try and turn into that.
Yeah, Brianna and I actually had a conversation with a grease board the other day, talking about it.
Okay.
So, yes, no, it was email well-written, well-spent time.
I will just wait for when you have some time to answer.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I do. The East Sunset Way Neighborhoods, traffic calming?
Yes.
Is there anything happening there?
I will let Mr. Seaman speak to that.
Thank you. There is, yes, there's quite a bit happening on that. So as you recall, late this summer, we had a workshop open house at Senior Center, got a lot of great input from a number of people. And we took all that, all that information, all those comments back, and along with the information that we've collected with speeds and traffic volumes, came up with a plan for traffic, for installing preliminary pilot traffic calming devices in the East Sunset Neighborhood, both north and south of...
Sunset.
Of East Sunset, thank you. And so we're in the process of finalizing that design. Our plan is to get that information out to the neighborhood here shortly, very shortly. Hopefully, within the next month, we're sort of bumping against the holidays here. But that's still, the plan is to get that information out to the community in calendar year 2017 and hopefully install those interim traffic calming devices either by the end of this year or shortly into the, into January of next year. So, and those interim traffic calming devices, just a spoiler alert, I guess, is, so you all know, is, are primarily speed humps and small traffic circles, similar to what you'd see in Seattle. So, and they're interim, in that we're looking to, they're not permanent devices. They're probably going to be rubberized curb with some kind of fill in the middle, asphalt or something, for the traffic circles, and then temporary speed humps that are drilled into the pavement but can also be removed. And so, and they're in locations that, that we took all, as I said, we took all the information that we got from the community. We took that along with the speed and the data that we had and located these where we felt they would most, where they would best address people's concerns and comments. And so that's, excuse me, that's phase, phase one of this work. All right, our idea is to get those devices out there, get them in place, let people live with them, see how they work, have them out there, for we're thinking about maybe a 10 to 12-week period. And over that time, get people's comments on an ongoing basis and see where we're at. And so, and if they make, I think then the next step after that is to decide, yes, those make sense to be a permanent installation, or some of them aren't quite right, or some of them maybe are in the wrong location. But that's the purpose of the pilot program and we're, you know, we're excited, we haven't done anything like this before. I certainly haven't done anything in a pilot sense like this before. So it's, I think it's new to all of us. I think it's exciting because rather than talking about, sort of the standard way of doing traffic calming is getting 70% or 60% or some percent of votes, and that's always hard to do and you end up not doing anything. So we're trying a different approach, which is let's just go out and do something in a preliminary pilot way, get impact, or, I'm sorry, input from the public about how it's working, and then decide what the next steps are from there. So that's, I know I haven't given you specific dates, but we're currently in the process of working with a contractor to figure out costs and availability to do that. And then the other piece that we want to do is get that information about exactly where those devices are going to be placed and share that with the East Sunset community.
All right, thank you for all that detail. When's the last time you had contact with the community? So any messages going out? And I'm wondering if it isn't time or that to at least make a status update available?
That's fair.
I have the impression that it's been a while since anybody's heard from us.
The last really big input that we've, where we've shared with the community was that, was that late summer meeting.
So, yeah, some type, and I don't know if you have a contact list or how you're doing it right now, but I think some kind of a status update.
Sure, sure enough.
Just to let people know that they're not forgotten and that you're progressing and you have a plan and you have some rough timelines and rough ideas. And I've received comments.
Fair enough, we can do that.
Saying they're wondering, they don't know what's going on. Thanks.
And I just have one suggestion, because it, I'm very appreciative of you piloting something, because I actually think that's a good thing for them to try it out. But under promise and over-deliver, make sure you've got the right dates, because I think they've waited long enough now to try something that, don't give them an early date and miss it. Give them a date and be early, would be better.
Thank you for that.
And thank you, Paul, for speaking up for me and my community. My neighborhood, I mean. My neighborhood, I should say, not my community. So, okay, good. Anything else on updates? All right. So I want to talk about Transportation Benefit District shortly here. And so we're talking about process, we're not talking about details of the project or whatever, right? So the process is kind of was, actually, in the current agenda bill, it says we, infrastructure is supposed to return it to the council on December 4th. And we didn't put it on this night's agenda, rolling it into December, but then realizing that because the 1st of December is a Friday, which makes the third of, third Thursday in December, after the last city council meeting in December, which would be the third Monday, that if we did it on the 21st, we couldn't get back to council till January. Okay? So my thought originally, my bias, is we've got a lot of stuff going on in December with budget and moratorium and all those things, and I didn't have a problem with rolling it into the first meeting in January. But I've heard some other people having that concern, and it did say originally that it could come back December 4th. So the alternative we have, I'm going to give you a couple of them, is we can do as my original thought was, roll to December 21st Infrastructure Committee meeting and then to the first meeting in January. Or if we think it's critical to have this addressed by the council in December before the end of the year, the last council meeting is the 18th. So we could squeeze it into our work session on Monday, the 11th, and have the whole council look at that. And then if they feel good, they could refer it to the 18th or, or kind of, because they can't officially, but I guess, send it to the 18th for the whole council to address. Or if they don't have enough consensus on the 11th, it could roll, it can roll back to us on the 21st and then to the first meeting in January. So the whole question to me boils down to, there's a whole bunch of details and times and dates. The question is, does it have to be dealt with in December? If it does, why? If not, can we let it roll to, and the first meeting in January is the 2nd of January? So it's pretty quick. I don't think much is going to happen between the 18th of December and the 2nd of January with holidays and everything as well. So that's, the question is, is timing critical here? Is something that I'm not aware of that this timing is critical? I'm not aware of any, so I'm asking input from the two of you.
Sure. May I go first?
Yes.
So the idea, if you're asking this committee...
Yes.
That our recommendation is to refer it to the work session on the...
11th.
The 11th for possible return to the full council on the...
18th.
18th. Then I support that. And the reason I'd like to have that conversation, because we are, at least my brain is really immersed in everything money right now. We're doing the budget. And, and as, and I heard you two talking about this earlier, you know, we, I'd intended to say something about this last night in the budget meeting and I ended up not, and I just forgot. But we were, we were proposed, we were presented with, you want to look at one year or one project at a time, or do you want to look at everything that's unfunded for the next five years in the CIP? And in my brain, I was thinking, yeah, but a TBD could be something in between. And, and that's why I think it's an excellent time to have this conversation during the budget time.
Hello?
Yes.
Mary echoes that with her scratchy voice. All right. So, and I'm...
I have a process thing, though. If we do do this, I think Sheldon would have to, I don't even know if he can do that. It would have to, it'd have to be on, go back to council on consent with a referral.
Is that a four to... Yes.
Yes, we'd have to update the agenda bill, so that on December 4th, the council refers it to the work session on the 11th.
That would be our recommendation.
Right.
Right, and I'm making notes about that.
Right, okay.
Will it actually get on the agenda, or is it something we walk on on Monday?
On the 4th?
If the agenda's done.
On December 4th, I can make it on December 4th, and that's still before the 11th.
Yeah, we got plenty of time to get it on that.
So, there's plenty of time on that, that the clerk's office can update the agenda bill and put it on there.
So, the point is, is on the agenda the 4th, we, instead of referring it to infrastructure, it's going to be referred to the work session.
Correct.
And the work session will do with it as they see fit, whether they get it back to city council on the 18th or in January.
Well, the idea is, what I'm hearing is, is refer to the December 11 workshop with the expectation that it goes back to council on December 18. And then the council will do with it what they would do with it on, at the workshop.
Okay. I'll express, I'd, I'd rather do it the other way, but I'll go along with you all doing it this way, if you like. I don't see the jamming of things all at once, but it'll work for me. So, you got it? Okay, and that'll, and we should do that on the 4th. It, it should come with an explanation. I don't want to know if we want to do it on consent, or do we want to just do it on consent? I mean...
I was just going to ask the clerk to put it on consent.
Yeah, okay, consent, because it's, it's coming back there. Okay, so we can do it on consent, because if I, if I was one of them and I saw that on consent coming to the work session, I would probably go, huh? That's, that's why I ask, if there's an explanation that goes with it.
So, so do you want to, so do you want to keep the December meeting on the 21st, or do you want to move it a week in front? Regardless of the TBD decision, there's other items too, right?
So, yeah, regardless, we'll keep the infrastructure on the 21st next month.
Okay.
We won't move that, and we'll deal with whatever we deal with on that month, we'll build that agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay? All right? Are we good? All right. We're adjourned.